Good evening and welcome. It's nice to see so many people here for our meeting. Tonight is our Thursday, November 10th, 2022 Regular School Committee Meeting. If those who are here could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first order of business is public comment. And I just, because I know we have a lot of people here, I just want to get a sense, how many people know that they are planning on making a public comment? Okay, so our, our public comment policy is we have a 15 minutes set aside for public comment. We do three minutes per speaker. We'll do our best to get everybody broken in. Can I just, I know a lot of people are here about the special education budget. Are there people here who want to speak to other topics? Okay, so I'm going to invite you to come up first, and then we'll move into the special education topics.
I'll be quick.
And Amanda keeps the time for us. So, oh, and just one more thing before you start. It's a little bit awkward because we don't engage back and forth after your comment because if you're later on the agenda, we may incorporate some of it, but we don't do the back and forth with the public comment because we want to avoid any potential open meeting law violations. So we're not being rude.
No, I understand.
Thank you. If you just want to state your name and the town that you live in.
Sure. Jeff Rowland, Hopkinton. Just have a little statement to read. I'm a member of the Climate Action Plan Work Group, a subgroup of the Sustainable Green Committee focused on the strategy for Hopkinton to get to net zero carbon emissions. Both the federal and Massachusetts state governments have set the goal of net zero by 2050 with incremental milestones along the way. It aligns with goals set forth by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPCC. The goals are a 50% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, 75% by 2040, and 100% by 2050 to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. The Select Board has recommitted this year that getting to net zero and addressing climate change is a primary goal for the town. We as a town will set a net zero goal that is in line with, or even more aggressive than the state goal. As a thriving town with so much going for it, Hopkinton wants to lead by example. Our worry is that the emissions from fossil fuels unfortunately can't be practically offset, and the capital plan committing to the replacement of natural gas equipment with a 25-year lifespan means the schools will not be able to achieve net zero in time unless we end up replacing this planned equipment before its end-of-life date. Net zero in practice means no fossil fuel usage. The Sustainable Green Committee discussed recommended approaches to this challenge with Perkins Eastman at our, at our meeting this past Monday. Based on their advice, our suggestion is to look at all the schools HVAC systems more holistically than individual unit replacements and consider what it would take to transition each building off of fossil fuels. The Hopkins School, for example, for instance, is being prepared for both a major renovation and nine HVAC replacements over the next several years at an equipment cost of almost $3 million and could be a perfect case study for such an approach. Since we've heard at the prior public forum that air source heat pumps aren't feasible at commercial scale yet, another option to consider is a geothermal heat pump system, similar to what is being considered by ESPC2 and Perkins Eastman for the potential Elmwood School replacement. With the reduced electric rates thanks to the planned solar power purchase agreement and the operational efficiency of geothermal systems, the likely steeper upfront costs should be offset by lower yearly operational costs long-term. There are also state and federal incentives for green renovations that can lower the capital expense. We appreciate that this committee and the school employees make hard decisions and aim to be responsible with taxpayer money, but respectfully ask if a hale holistic approach to reducing fossil fuel usage at the schools has been or could be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to invite Becky, if you want to come up because as our HTA president, if you want to lead off.
Sure. Thank you. Hi, everyone. It's good to see you. First time in person at a school committee in a while. Okay, so tonight you will be hearing from our district administrators as they present their request for special education for the 23-24 school year. And I'm sure it will come with a lot of charts, facts, and other types of data. For example, I'm sure it will be mentioned that our students with high needs have almost doubled in the last 10 years, now making up almost 30% of our students. But this doesn't tell you the real story of those students who can't be measured based on numbers alone. You also need to look at the significance of their needs, which has, due to the pandemic, increased exponentially. I don't have numbers to give you to back that up, but I don't need to. Anyone who works with these students knows that they are not only suffering from learning loss, but these are the students who are most likely to also be facing serious social and emotional challenges. These have been the most challenging years teachers have ever faced. Our students need a lot and they deserve a lot, but unfortunately, our current staffing situation does not set them or our educators up for success. We are not here tonight asking for more money in our paychecks or better health insurance. We are asking for more staff, more boots in the classroom to do this incredibly important and challenging work. Currently, there is a trend of adding more director-level positions in Hopkinton. We have directors for SCL, DEI, and middle school English. In the proposed budget, we will add three more: two specialized curriculum directors and a preschool director. We estimate that there will be close to, if not more than, $700,000 annually spent on salaries for positions which have no student-facing responsibilities. As our student numbers continue to go up and their needs continue to beg more attention, we feel that money would be better spent on educators. We are here on behalf of HTA to share not just data, but to paint a picture of the issues that we as teachers are experiencing in the classroom as we work to meet the needs of our neediest students, as well as our proposed solutions. We hope to give you a lot to consider and question as you go into this process. Until now, we have felt like our many impassioned, pleased, and careful data have fallen on deaf ears, and we are happy to have the opportunity to speak to you directly tonight. To not hear from the educators of this district as you embark on making such important decisions that will impact the entire district would be a great disservice. On behalf of the membership, I thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Before turning it over to my colleagues, I want to share with you a little bit about the high school. The special education caseloads fail to accurately portray the workload of the special education and support staff. The social, emotional, and mental health needs of their students are asking for more of the learning specialists than they ever have. Next year, they will receive only a .4 moderate learning specialist. This is not enough. They are requesting an additional special education liaison to reduce caseloads and to allow these educators to spend more time with each student. Thank you.
So before the next person comes up, I just want to, I know that I look like eight hands went up, so that would leave six people left. If there are people who are speaking on similar things, if you want to try to consolidate and bring it into one, that would help make sure we get everything up here. All right, so. Right, and if you could just state your name. I know that was Becky.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we get.
My name is Janet Constantine, and I am a teacher at the preschool for the past 20 years. I'm here to advocate for our educators who are the first lines of support for our special education students who entered this district. Currently, the proposed budget states an additional preschool .9 ABA paraprofessional. However, it is important to note that this is not actually an additional staff member. This person is already part of our staff and is currently funded through grant money. Next year, the position will be funded through the regular operating budget. While we have been grateful to have this paraprofessional this year, it's quite honestly not enough as our current numbers dramatically increase. As of November, the pre-K has qualified an additional 18 students to our program with many more evaluations pending. This is our third consecutive school year where the percentage of learners in each classroom identified as having special needs has been greater than 50%. Massachusetts state law dictates that the number of learners with special needs in an integrated setting be less than 50% of the total number of students. The staff at the preschool have felt the impact of this increasing population, which is well documented. As the numbers in our preschool classrooms increase, the service hours for OTPT and/or speech also increase. One may argue that the director positions, specifically the preschool director position in the proposed budget, are necessary. They very well may be needed, but not at the expense of the student-facing positions. The bottom line is we are facing another school year where our percentage of special education, education learners in each classroom will be greater than 50%.
Hi, my name is Kristen Pearson, and I'm a moderate learning specialist at Marathon. The special educators at Marathon are proud to hold themselves and their students to high expectations and prove to make significant progress with student learning. However, increased enrollment and the high needs of students has so severely impacted their ability to provide high-quality services that they are currently forced to function from a place of prioritizing safety over student learning. Faculty at Marathon would also like it to be made clear that Lauren has been advocating to upper administration for an increase in staffing for a number of years, and the special education department feels highly supported by her as an administrator. Four learning specialists compiled data to reflect the current challenges at Marathon with the exception of one educator who was advised not to respond due to non-PTS status. The following data illustrates the impact of the administration's lack of response to increased special education enrollment this school year. Five unplanned intensive students were enrolled into the kindergarten and first-grade intensive programming requiring one-to-one support on their IEPs. However, no new staff support were hired. In 2021, there were 13 kindergarten and first-grade intensive students and 11 ABA paraprofessionals. There are currently 18 intensive students K&amp;1 and only 11 paraprofessionals to support them. Four out of four learning specialists have at least one student who exhibits severe problem behavior like aggression, property destruction, and bolting on a weekly basis and requires de-escalation and/or physical management in order to keep them and others safe. Two out of four learning specialists report that their student services have been impacted or canceled due to the need to respond to severe problem behavior on a daily basis. Two out of four report that their student services have been impacted or canceled for this reason at least once a week. Four out of four learning specialists report that a general education classroom has had to be evacuated due to a child on their caseload engaging in severe problem behavior. Three out of four learning specialists report that a classroom teacher, paraprofessional, or related service provider has had to complete an incident report due to injury from a student on their caseload. Three out of four learning specialists have had to complete an incident report due to injury from de-escalating a student in crisis. Administration's current proposal of three new director positions as well as a reduction in direct service providers is the opposite of what our building truly needs at this time, which is that of direct support staff. Administration has referenced DESI's research justifying increased student para ratios and para fading initiatives. However, students at this age level require the most support now in order to make the effective progress that is necessary to promote independence and fade support in the future. Until this is addressed, we will have to continue to prioritize safety over instruction and consider more realistic expectations of what our students can achieve with the resources that we have available.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mary Zambuto. I am a learning specialist at Elmwood School. This is my 10th year as a learning specialist at Elmwood School, and on behalf of the learning specialists and our teaching partners, I'm here to share with you what Elmwood educators need so we can do the best for our special education students. At Elmwood, the list of duties and responsibilities of learning specialists is an enormous and ever-expanding job. Within those duties is our role to complete academic achievement testing for all, excuse me, for all initial and three-year reevaluation meetings, as well as classroom observations, which run 30 to 45 minutes. Depending on the needs of a child, direct testing can take anywhere from two hours to over five hours. This is spread over multiple days, typically in 30 to 45-minute increments. As reported to the state of Massachusetts, this comes to an average of two and a half hours per week per special educator, time spent testing, report writing, meeting, and writing IEPs. Also consider that we are often testing one to three students at any given time. Since we cannot be in two places at once, learning specialists are often forced to test during periods of time when we would typically be providing academic service in the classroom. We are not provided coverage, so our students and general education teaching partners are left without specialized support for that period of time. Learning specialists must also then attend the meetings for these students, another average of 60 minutes away from our classroom duties. To have a learning specialist with time dedicated specifically to academic achievement testing would alleviate lapses in academic services provided by the learning specialists across this building and give us more time to focus on our students and other multiple job duties. Elmwood is currently not included on the list of additional staff in tonight's presentation. We hope you will consider including this request in your work for planning next year's budget.
I'm Carly Adet, and I am here on behalf of Hopkins educators to give you an idea of the challenges we're facing and the staffing we need. I'm a fourth-grade learning specialist, and I've worked in Hopkinton for eight years. We're very thankful for the proposed recommendation to continue funding the full-time learning specialist and paraprofessional at Hopkins that was grant-funded last year, but the proposed budget will leave many challenges unresolved. The American School Counselor Association recommends that the counselor-to-student ratio in schools is 250 to 1 in order to most effectively serve all students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Currently, the Hopkins student-to-counselor ratio is an average of 320 to 1. While this is already over the recommended ratio, this is a simple look at data that doesn't consider the intensity and counseling needs within our building. Our special education students are often our tier-three level or those with the highest social, emotional needs, requiring frequent check-ins or additional counseling supports. They may require counselors to manage emergency situations and work on regulation in moments of distress to help manage disruptive, escalating, and sometimes aggressive behaviors. When these occur, the counselor's priority is to work with the student in need, but that means sometimes pulling them from other lower-level needs that will require them to find additional time to reschedule, assuming that it fits into the other student's schedules. In looking at the Hopkins counseling caseload, 28% of our students are requiring a high level of support, which often includes individual and group counseling on a weekly basis, individualized behavior plans and behavioral response protocols, data collection and analysis, frequent family communication, and frequent consultations with general education and special education teachers. We share this to say that Hopkins School requires an additional counselor in order to support the high levels of needs while also having counseling personnel to continue supporting the remaining student body in learning social, emotional practices and providing preventative interventions. Thank you.
So with the committee's permission, I'd like to permit us to go a little bit over the 15 minutes so we can allow the, the last couple people to speak.
Appreciate it. Good evening. My name is Matthew O'Connell at the middle school. At the middle school, in the last several years, the only increase to our special education staff came at the cost of eliminating our reading specialist. According to STAR reading scores and MCAS data, HMS has more students than ever, not meeting expectations when it comes to reading. Due to the loss of our reading specialist, this reading support is now being delivered by our learning specialists, who, while wonderful, are not reading teachers and are not licensed to do so and have no formal training in teaching reading, let alone to our most struggling students. The district found funding for an English director at the middle school but has not found funding for a reading specialist. Having directors to oversee the success of a program is meaningful, but only when you have sufficient staff in place to do the work. We don't need someone to sit in an office and look at data. We need someone in the classrooms now working with students. Our learning specialists are stretched incredibly thin, and though we've gotten used to expecting excellence from them, we are reaching a tipping point. This year, many of our learning specialists are scheduled to teach six out of seven periods most days, leaving them with no planning, sorry, co-teacher planning time, planning with their co-teachers, or the ability to attend team meetings so they're able to work with their students, teachers, to problem-solve, and check in on progress. The prep is the only time they have to test students, prepare for IEP and annual meetings, write reports, and communicate with parents. They have no common planning time and no PLC time. The Director for Specialized Instruction, which is being included in Dr. Zaleski's presentation, would have little opportunity to work with these learning specialists because their days and their plates are full, nor would this position be someone in the classroom, which is why we feel the value in this position would go better gone, sorry, would better go elsewhere. If we were to be able to have a learning specialist to manage the testing and scheduling of IEPs, if we're able to get back our reading specialist, it would take this off the plate of our learning specialist and give them back time to be in classrooms, to work with students, or have smaller academic preps. If we could have our literacy tutor position moved from a grant-funded status to a full-time and get one per grade, we would be better able to meet the reading and writing needs of not just our special education students, but many of our general ed students who are also struggling. If the middle school were able to get three pairs, one per grade, we'd be able to prevent our special education students from having every class together because we could create more supportive classes in the schedule. When all of our neediest students are grouped together all day long, their teachers are less equipped to support them than if they could be more equitably divided up. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, or good evening. My name is Rachel Carls. I am one of two physical therapists in this district. This is a collective statement from our PT and OT team, who between all of us have over 94 years of experience, professional experience in this district alone. Later on this evening, you will hear Dr. Zaleski present her special education budget. As you will hear, this includes a significant cut to PT and OT services. As of the writing of this statement, there are 135 students in this district who receive OT and 50-plus students who receive PT, and many of these students are serviced two times per week. This does not include the at least 12 to 16 students who have qualified for direct PT or OT, or both, since the start of this school year. The district is proposing we lose a .8 PT, which is a 44% decrease, and would leave only one physical therapist to service the entire district. They are also proposing a .8 OT cut, which is a 21% decrease, and would leave only three OTs to service 135 students. It is important to note that the newly qualified 12 to 16 students are the result of 57 evaluations that have occurred within this district just in September alone. What is significantly concerning about this decision is that the data used to make it does not appear to be completely accurate. It was not shared fully with the PT and OT department. It was shown to us very briefly over a screen share on a Zoom call. We were also not given the opportunity to share updated caseloads when new students over the course of the last several months were qualifying for therapy services, so it is not reflective of the current reality of our PT and OT direct service care. Also of concern is that the therapists have been asked to group students to satisfy IEP requirements. This is, in some cases, against the professional judgment. Not only does this pose a significant decrease in the quality of care, but it poses a significant safety concern when high-need students are unable to be placed in groups. Furthermore, therapists like myself, who travel between schools and service upper-grade levels, it makes the schedule of these buildings very difficult to group students. But please know, we are already grouping cohorts when it's possible and it is beneficial for the students. We understand there is a request for at least three new admin positions that are not student-facing. The numbers presented do not take into account all the other roles that our PT and OT staff do to support our students. These include evaluations, as I said, there were 57, assessments, report writing, RTI groups, parent and teacher consultation, and meetings. Should this reduction in FTEs be approved, it will create caseloads of at least 60 students per therapist. Group sizes will be upwards of four to five students, and it will significantly impact IEP service delivery as it is written in IEPs. And additionally, student safety. The end game here is what is in the best interest of our special education students in this district, and it is not reducing PT and OT FTEs. And in closing, the District Improvement Plan cites, one, a plan for continued growth of this district, two, to meet every student's needs, and three, a community of respect and collaboration.
Are there any other public comments? Did we get everybody? All right. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate having all the people here willing to make comments here in public. And as well as, we also did receive a fair amount of email, which is helpful as well. So with that, we're going to shift into recognitions. Are there any recognitions that we have tonight? Anybody? Okay, then we can go ahead and go into reports. Our Student Council rep is at a football game tonight. We are hoping that the Hillers will prevail there, so we will get our report from Robert if the next. The next item of business we have here is our MCAS report. Mr. LeBrod, we've been waiting anxiously to hear that.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh. Thank you to the committee for indulging the time tonight to talk a little bit about our MCAS results from the spring of 2022. Tonight, what we're going to do, and as efficiently as I can with several data points, is shine a light on all of the elements of our tests administered in the spring that give us reasons to celebrate, as well as some areas that give us some opportunities to think about what we should be thinking, moving ahead, looking differently. It's important to note that tonight we are looking extremely high level. There are seemingly countless ways to slice and dice MCAS data, which many of us do, sometimes for sport. But as far as tonight, what we're doing is we're really looking at what our general population, all students who were administered the test and who participated, what those results tell us. So, to begin, I'd like to talk about how we're going to frame what we're looking at, and it's important to think about the comparisons of 2022 spring administration and all those prior, dating back, you know, prior to 2022, back when we're thinking 2019, all the way back to when we started administering the test in the late 90s. It was much easier to compare one year to the other, one cohort to the other, one subject to the other. That all changed in 2020. And so it's important tonight that as we look at these data points, that we're mindful that while we can draw some comparisons, it is a challenge in other areas to be able to exactly look the way we historically have. So first off, a few headlines. The first one is that it's important to note that the spring 2022 administration was the first time since 2019 when the MCAS was administered in its most traditional way. That means that our 10th graders hadn't taken a test since they were in grade seven. And that's a big, there's a lot that changes between grade seven and grade 10, and that's important to note. Our new baseline really is the 2022 test. When we look at these scores, we're excited about looking forward, but really looking back gives us some mixed results. We will do some comparisons there tonight, but it is important to note that really we are drawing a new baseline. And when I say we, I do not mean the Hopkinton Public Schools, but really the entire state of Massachusetts when we look at these assessments. So with that, we should look at the reality that we are not comparing our, our scores to 2021, and you'll see how I thread that needle in a little bit. And it's also one more thing to say, most districts really followed some state trends, but there were exceptions along the way, and I'll be able to highlight some of those for you this evening. Now, you might be familiar with the accountability determinations that districts historically have, have received and been presented with. This is a stamp that says how a school is doing, as well as identifying what a school or a school district might need. It's measured against state-identified targets, which are all unique, each and every one of them is unique to each district based on the metrics that the state collects from us. This year, 2022, based on the results of our 2022 results of MCAS and all the other pieces of data that we collect, student attendance, teacher retention, everything like that, the state is not issuing determinations except for those districts receiving, requiring assistance or intervention. We are not one of those districts. We typically are labeled as a meeting or exceeding district, and that we assume to be the case because the phone has not, has not rang. So when we talk about the MCAS, it's important to note that it is truly one piece of our progress monitoring puzzle. It is one that we are required to do. It is one that we are obligated to do by our nature of being part of the state of Massachusetts. However, it's only one piece of what we and other districts look at. So for instance, we also have locally-developed assessments. Our educators will administer those routinely. Our educators will administer those routinely. We have informal assessments. This might be an educator creating an exit ticket at the end of a class to check for understanding. We have ongoing observations. Each and every day, our teachers are collecting data, sometimes qualitative, sometimes quantifiable. And then we have, because for lack of a better label on this, what I'm calling formal assessments. These would be the progress monitoring tools like the BAS, the STAR assessment, all of that. So when you look at that as whole, MCAS is really only one piece of the puzzle. It's really important to think about the data point as being just one, and yet it's an important one. It's probably our most public one. It's the one that people hang a lot on, even though it truly is just one measure in time. Speaking of time, a little bit about what the administration timeline has looked like. So way back in 2019, which feels like a lifetime ago, we administered full testing, grades three to eight, and then at the high school, primarily in grade 10. Then 2020 showed up, and I'm going to skip right past that. We did not administer the MCAS, as you might recall, in the spring of 2020. In 2021, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education returned the testing requirement, however administering half tests, so most tests being two-day sessions, we administered one-day sessions across the state, except for the high school, which did do full testing of two-day sessions, where two-day sessions were the test. If it was a one-day session, obviously, we administered it like that. And then we returned to 2022, which is back to full testing, grades three to eight, and at our high school. So what I'd like to do now is take a little look at how we compare to the state. And to do that, I'd like to talk about two trends that we identified. Now, the Commonwealth has identified that ELA scores declined for the second year in a row in 2022. So they declined in 2021, they continued to decline in 2022. In Hopkinton, we did follow that trend, but at a dramatically slighter rate than what the state average was. In math, across the state, math scores improved over 2021 with an average of six points of increase. In Hopkinton, we followed that trend, except we beat them by one because our average was seven points of increase in our, in our math. And I apologize, because both of those in math should be labeled as grades three-three. So if we look, and I'm going to flip through all these pretty charts and graphs, I know you have access to all of those, and talk just a little bit so you can get a visual of where we stand. Grade three to eight ELA, and you're going to hear me say this for every single one of these, we outpaced the state in every single one of these. We have a higher rate of students who are meeting expectations, usually pretty dramatically. Our level of those students exceeding expectations, much higher. Our rate of students partially and not meeting expectations, much lower than you see. So you see grade three to eight ELA. Grade three to eight math follows that same pattern. Grades five and eight science, you can see a much, much more notable increase in exceeding and meeting expectations at our science. Our grade 10 ELA, I apologize for the format shift there. You can see again, grade 10 math. Grade 10 science. So with all of that, you got all that, right? Okay, every data point, good. All right. So what we're going to do now is, we're going to look at some bounce backs. And by bounce backs, I mean, where did we, if we assumed that 2019 had us in one spot, the onset of the pandemic, the implications of how schooling was altered, 2021 put us a little bit lower, where are we bouncing back? So if we look at achievement, you can see across the board, we have a few spots where we should be excited about a bounce back. For instance, high school English. You'll see, let me explain my coding because it's not intuitive. So a check means, yeah, we bounced back from 2021, and we've gone back to where we were at 2019. A check plus means that not only have we bounced back, but we have now outpaced where we left off in 2019. So you can see, we have outpaced where we were in ELA at the high school level. We've also outpaced where we were in science, technology, engineering for grade five. You can also see overall, grades three to eight math, we have returned, we've bounced back, we gained seven points over where we were in 2021. You'll see at the bottom there, science, technology, engineering, the assessment for high school is a brand-new assessment this year, so that does not have a comparison. It's the first time that the next-generation science MCAS was administered at the high school level, so you'll see that it's a little bit different there. Can't draw a comparison, but next year, back at this time, I'll be able to give you a comparison to where we were. Couple other points to note. We talked about high school English, talked about elementary math, elementary science. A couple highlights when you think about what our programs are actually doing, which is not captured there. And two really quick examples, at the elementary school, our instruction around vocabulary was seen as a high point. Students being able to identify and use vocabulary words, identify meaning, and identify words used in a passage, and choosing evidence to support that, all related to vocabulary, was a bright spot for us. At the high school, we saw an improvement in idea development. We did see that students continue to be stronger in nonfiction writing over fiction, fiction writing, prose, poetry. And then in math, our elementary math, again, as you can see, responded to our bounce back and then some. And then grade four constructed responses is another point of celebration, and I say this mindful of, as a former fourth-grade teacher, I would be really proud of this, that we, our average there was 78%, which is 23 points higher than the state average for that data point. So that is reason to celebrate. So this is looking at student achievement. I'm going to turn the page, and we're going to talk about student growth percentiles. Now, this is when we look at students growing over time. This is not us comparing a cohort. This is us looking at cohorts that are drawn from students across the state. These are students that have test score partners, and I'm saying all this, I know you guys are all familiar with this. This is looking at students who scored a certain way, and then we track them similarly. The only thing that they have in common is their test scores. So gender, race, ethnic background, socioeconomic status, location in the state, the only thing we're looking at is the student's test score. So if you look here, a lot of reason to celebrate. Now, again, student growth percentiles, it's a tricky thing because typically the last thing you do is compare cohort to cohort because the whole point is that the groups are different. That said, if you take a look across the board, each one of our student growth percentiles not only showed growth, but also exceeded the 2019 benchmark. Just as a point of reference, if you are looking at a student growth percentile or SGP of between 40 and 59, that's typical growth. An SGP of 60 to 79 is considered high growth. Now, let's take a look at some comparable districts to see where we, where we land. The districts we're looking at tonight are districts that are identified by the state as being comparable in an assortment of ways. Again, there are countless ways that we could, we could take just proximate neighbors, we could take towns that are the same size, we could take just towns that start with the letter H, but what we're going to do is look at the ones that the DESI has identified for the purpose of this comparison as being comparable. Those would be Acton, Boxborough, Arlington, Belmont, Burlington, Lexington, Melrose, Sharon, Walpole, Westboro and Winchester. So if we take a look at grade three to eight ELA in math, spoiler alert, we are orange. That's just by accident. I did not put in a special request that the state label us as orange. But you can see just by the visual there, for both ELA, which is on the left, three to eight, and math, three to eight, our achievement level is very high against our comparable Grade 10 math and grade 10 ELA, I apologize, the inverse, ELA on the left, math on the right, you can see yet again, very high. Grade three to eight science, another point to celebrate. Now, looking at our grade three to eight SGP's, once again, are students growing within the cohort of their test score peers as compared to the rest of the, our comparable districts? So what does this, oh, I lied. There we go. All right, so what does this all mean? And I promised you a very high-level look, very high-level look. So there's a few things. Before I get into this, it's important to note that we looked at all students. If we were to start looking at different subgroups, we might see data that's a little bit different. But as a whole, across our district, we have some things to think about. The first one is that across the board, not just with the assessment, but of course with school in general, I know we're in a room full of educators, we're getting back to normal. Feels a little bit more normal. We're not there yet, but we're getting there, which is a really good thing. We also have to be cognizant that we're unclear on the trends ahead. We don't know, because we have not gone through this before, what the pandemic implications are for our students, and I would probably lean especially into our early learners, what a year and a half, two years of disrupted, interrupted learning is going to have, we don't yet know that. So we need to look at all of this with a, with, with a little bit of caution. We do have much to celebrate, and we have work to do. We have work ahead, and it's going to have an impact on what we do moving ahead. So again, we have a district mission, we have a vision and a strategic improvement plan, all of which lean into making sure that students get what they need when they need it. We're thinking carefully about budgetary planning across the board so that students have what they need, not just in human capital, but also in the resources and programs, so that they can be best supported. We're continuing to look at our curriculum to make sure that it's not only tightly aligned to what the state frameworks are, but that we're implementing pedagogy and an instructional practice that really makes sense against what we know to be best practice to support all of our students all the time. And of course, we're continuing to use our progress monitoring. You heard me say at the start that that MCAS piece of the puzzle is only one of them. And so throughout the year, each and every month, we have different assessments in place that our educators are implementing and that our educators and administrators across our buildings and across the district are looking at to PH, how are we doing and where can we change? So a quick thank you. A thank you for the reports here tonight. In addition to the educators who do the work each and every day, there were a number of people who really helped in compiling this information tonight. The first one, our building administrators, our elementary and middle school department directors who did a great job diving deep into this data and who will continue to look at this data moving ahead, our HMS curriculum teacher leaders, as well as our HHS subject matter leads. And I'm going to throw this in here, I'm going to thank DESI because they do a great job of setting up some, some models and some interpretive tools that we get to use to really make sense of this data. I think I just set a record for the fastest MCAS presentation. So I don't have a slide that says questions, and yet I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Well, that was well presented. I mean, I think it's good, encouraging to see that the kids are doing okay. You know, that's, I think, the big takeaway for me from what you, everything that you just said, the teachers are doing a great job, the kids are okay. They're going to be okay. It's all right, year one, it's fine. So I think, you know, I appreciate that you, that things are still looking good for the district, but I think it's also important to know, like, things are okay, you know? I think it's great.
And I want to underscore the element too, that we are looking at a brand-new baseline. Yes, we can draw comparisons, but we really are looking at a new baseline, and so this will give us some information moving ahead.
Leah, do you have any questions? I don't know how your, your audio is with the, your connection. If you have questions, if you want to unmute and share them, or if you can, oh, there, there you are.
Yeah. So I do have a couple of questions. So you highlighted the grow, right? Like, there were a lot of rows there that were not growing. So if we're saying we're not comparing against 2021, then neither of them really tell us much, right? So the growth, I mean, as, as positive as it looks, isn't staying a lot, or otherwise we also have to take into account the, the kind of negative growth that you have on that chart, right?
I think that's a fair statement. I think that's a fair statement. We have to look at the, the picture comprehensively, and Leah, just flip back on the screen to our achievement page. You know, again, we have a lot to celebrate, but there are some areas where we need to continue to look very carefully at how we can be even better.
And then the other thing, right, I think I always say this every time we do the MCAS presentation, is the MCAS does not judge the kids, right? The MCAS is a judgment of the school and the sort of education system at the DESI level, but it's not like an individual child should have any repercussions or anything like that from, you know, bad MCAS scores or something like that. I think, I think that always needs to be emphasized.
I, I think, Leah, I'd agree with you. That's a, and that's an important point. I mean, this is as much an indicator, and actually more so an indicator of what we're doing and how we're doing well and where we could be even better. A wise colleague, a former colleague of mine gave me a line that has, that's held true to me, which is, you know, in talking to, say, a parent, your child is not a test score. Your child is, is more than that. And like we looked at with, if we were just looking at achievement data, yeah, there are a number of pieces. MCAS is one of them, but a student's achievement level is merely one sliver of who they are. I think it's a valid point.
Thank you. And I think that was it for me. I just wanted to kind of emphasize that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how the new baseline works in the coming years, even, you know, whether or not I'm on school committee. It'll be interesting to see what the trend is.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yeah, I know, I agree with Leah about the MCAS, it is an indicator. It is unfortunately the only tool that we have that, thanks to DESI, and I'd like to thank you, that allows us to look across the state. So it is a useful tool, tool for us, but, so I guess a question, are any of the other formal assessments, STAR or any of those, are they available comparatively with other districts or state data that we could ever see in the aggregate? Is this, is this truly the only tool that we have for school committee?
As in like the only public assessment?
Yeah. STAR will issue reports instead of just bar graphs, you know, so you could look, say, for example, at third grade ELA and see how many kids are exceeding the standard, meeting the standard.
And I guess for me, you know, echoing, it's great, the positive is great, the devil's in the details. And I'm one of those people who spends a lot of time looking at the subgroups and the subgroup performance and performance over time. So I'm asking, are you going to come back to us with the subgroup report looking at high-needs, socioeconomically disadvantaged, male versus female, special education? Those are the places where we see deficits and struggles, and I'd like to see more of that.
Do not have additional questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I actually want one more question. So what is the next step? I always wondered this because we always get this report, and I know there's a whole bunch of work this triggers among all of you. So how do we identify, you know, the areas of the gaps? And then figure out how to move forward?
Well, I think it's important to note that, that this presentation tonight, and please don't be insulted by this, this is not the first, this doesn't start anything for us. The work is already underway. Our educators have been looking at the data, they've been poring over it in their PLCs, they look at it with their building administrators, the building administrators are making plans for how they're going to implement this data, again, in concert with those other data points when they're triangulating it to figure out, what is it that this student might need that he or she is not getting? So that's really underway already, and I would say that these data points are things we look at consistently throughout the year. Again, I sound like a broken record here, but along with those other things that we look at, whether it be STAR, whether it be an end-of-unit assessment, a module test, whatever it might be.
Okay. That moves us into the superintendent's report. If there are parts of that, your goals or other that you want to move towards the end of the meeting, and just because I know we have a lot of staff here for presentations, that's fine. If you, otherwise, you can go ahead and do it, up to you.
All right. I'll start through. I would like to do at least the beginning of this because there is a portion that while Mrs. DeBeau is here, it would be good that she could contribute to.
Do you want her to come up?
Only if you have questions for her, we'll ask her to come into the hot seat. All right, well, thank you, everyone. This is the superintendent's report for November 10, 2022. I want to start with a shout-out because recently, the elementary school building committee, we've been saying, gosh, it would be really great if we could get into the high school to do these forums, it's probably the right setting, and Mr. Cousins has incredible new TV equipment back there. But what you don't see is that while we're all sitting on stage at seven o'clock at night, behind the scenes, that group of students is doing some amazing work. So I just wanted to thank them. The last time we had one of our forums, The last time we had one of our forums, Mr. Cousins sent me that photo. And of course, I want to say thank you to HCAM because they're always so accommodating. Anything we ever ask for, they deliver on. Is that coming out?
No.
No.
Mr. Cousins checking in.
Oh, all right. Just a very quick update on a few things. Marathon School, every week together, we say, has that construction started yet? You will be happy to know that yes, it has. So you can see what I think is an excavator there behind the fencing that's been erected. And in the picture on the right-hand side, you can see that they have boarded up that sort of means of egress to kind of keep that hallway safe for children. So yes, the work is underway. All right. We have also had conversations here about the playgrounds at Marathon, and it is one of our sort of CPC asks for this year. So I did visit with Mrs. DeBeau, and I wanted to sort of understand the differences really in the pre-K playground as well as the regular playground. So the pre-K playground is a playground that was built for students aged two to five, and essentially it's also built for students who may have some physical limitations. So for example, if you look at that swing that's in the bottom left-hand picture, you know, a kid can get into that swing. It's very low to the ground, and it doesn't have a whole lot of give. And if you look at the slide, what's interesting, and I don't think I ever noticed this before when I was visiting Marathon, is there is no climbing. You know, you just kind of are up on that hill, and that's what gets you down there. But there's, there's no sort of ladder concept that would get you onto that slide. Now, in stark contrast to that, this is the playground that we have in question. There are a lot of nice pieces of that structure. You can see that there's, in the left-hand picture, a lot of climbing apparatus. If you had been there when I was there during these recesses that happen around lunchtime, they are sort of swarmed with kids, but what Mrs. DeBeau has to do is sort of limit it so that one day a week, you get to access the structure, the other four days, you don't. And we've said that kindergarten will get a couple of recesses a day, but because of time on learning restrictions, grade one does not. They get one, one timeout there each day. When you look in the upper right and you see that swing set, there are four swings there, those are the only swings for, I mean, what's now 600 kids, and that feels pretty tight. And then, of course, you've got that seesaw, and if you count the number of kids who are on it, every possible space to put a child, someone is in that space. They love the structure, but as, as you can see, that's, it's limiting. So they've been very creative at Marathon Elementary School. They've done a lot of things through grant funding. So through a grant, we have new basketball hoops there, and they're great because they are perfect for five and six-year-olds in terms of size. There's hopscotch that has been painted out there, and a bunch of other things have been painted out on the pavement. So kids are engaging in that, which is nice because it kind of takes them out of just like, you know, some kind of game in the field. But if you look at those kids who are on the rock wall, I watched them for a significant amount of time, and that's kind of a thing they do. They go down the rock wall and then back up, and it's kind of like a tricky little bit of a walk, but they've kind of made their own fun out there. So maybe I've gone a long way to say that it would be nice to have more playground and structure, structural equipment out there, just because I think it would pull some of the kids off the fields and, and get to some of those highly coveted spots at recess time. And I don't know if you have questions for Mrs. DeBeau, but she's asking, which is fortuitous.
Excellent. Does anybody have questions?
These pictures are super helpful because we talked about this capital project two meetings ago.
Yes.
We didn't, those of us who don't have Marathon students, we had a hard time getting our heads around what the ask was. So thank you.
Yeah, the equipment is so different, really.
Leah, did you have any questions on that?
No, I just echo what Amanda said. It really did paint a picture that I don't think I had before, especially the size of the equipment versus the size of the kids that were saying are using them.
Great. All right. Thank you.
All right. Now I have my all-the-time update on the elementary school building committee, too, and the Elmwood replacement project. Just a quick update on what's been happening. We had a public forum last Wednesday night on November 2nd. The visioning team met on Saturday, November 5th, at the middle school, and then had a regular ESBC 2 meeting here on November 8th. So we've been really busy, lots of meetings. And one thing that the community may want to do is go back and watch the ESBC 2 meeting of November 8th. It was filmed here by HCAM. And I think what's interesting in that particular report is that we had our traffic person come out and deliver a preliminary report. So I thought the traffic news was actually pretty good news, and it's very interesting, I think, even from a community standpoint. So worth watching. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, November 22nd, and that again is here. And then our public forum is on Wednesday, November 30th, and that's at the high school. I would absolutely encourage people to get to the high school for that night because not only will we be discussing things like traffic, but we'll also be looking at grade configuration. And I think grade configuration is a huge piece. It's on everyone's mind.
Can I just add to that? The November 30th maybe wasn't on everybody's radar if you're not on the ESBC committee, but that also is going to include the school committee so that we can be part of the grade configuration discussion, because that's a vote that we will take in, I think, January, right?
Yes.
Who would want to be part of that?
Yeah, thank you for that. And I say, I don't think people realize that you have control of the grade configuration and the SB C2 has control of the, the physical plant project.
Can I just say, so I went to the visioning meeting, and as you always do, you thanked everybody at the community for showing up on a Saturday, whatever. I just want to say thank you to you, Susan, and Tim, and all the administrators and staff, Mrs. Carter. All these like little meetings on here, you guys are all at, you know, weekends, evenings, many, many evenings. I just want to thank you for that because nobody really stood up and said, thank you to you guys, and it's really remarkable how much energy and effort you're putting into this.
All right. So here are some photos from the visioning team meeting that happened last Saturday. And what you're seeing on the screen right now is an activity that we engaged in called SCON, Strengths, Challenges, Opportunities, and Needs. And I thought it was a super helpful activity, and I wanted to report out some of what people were saying. So we started talking about grade level considerations during that activity. And in that first box across the top, you can see our current configuration. Nothing about that is any different from what you live today. And what you're seeing in there, too, are the student population in those places, and I will apologize to pre-K. I think we need to get our Perkins Eastman friends to start putting 103 up there in pre-K because I, I've gotten several people who said, but that's not the right number. I say, I know. We all know that it's not the right number. When you go down to the next bar, what you'll see there is what this will look like in 2032. All of the numbers are projected there for student enrollment, but there are no grade changes. So you'll still see that Marathon houses pre-K to 1, the new Elmwood would house 2 to 3. That design is for 785 students. That's what the MSBA has agreed to, and we, we are predicting 774 students. The Hopkins School would be at 802, middle school 1198, or for the sake of convenience, 1200, and the high school about 1,500 students. So you can see the enormous amount of growth that is predicted over the next decade. If you look at the last graph, you'll see what happens if you create a 234 school and you migrate grade six into Hopkins. So that first number, first school, Marathon stays exactly the same. The second school, which becomes a 234, is designed for about 1,200 kids, and the prediction is 1,176. One of the advantages to that is that the MSBA would fund another grade levels worth of physical structure. If you take a look at 56, which would move into Hopkins, that's 803. Grades seven and eight would be 795 students. And obviously, the current middle school, even if it didn't have anything done to it whatsoever, would be too large for a 795 student body. But you've also got about 250 more kids at the high school. So whether or not there's a way to join those two physical plants and permit some of those high school students to find their way into some of the vacated space in the middle school is yet to be seen, but it's, it's part of the thought process right now. So in terms of strengths and opportunities for a 234 building, they looked at, and I categorized them for the purpose of tonight. So we looked at them developmentally, programmatically, operationally, and fiscally. So developmentally, the National Institute of Health has some articles out there that would say that the average year of onset of puberty for girls is 11, about 11 and a half years old, and for boys, it's about 13 and a half years old. So if you have a 234 school, it's pretty typical that the fifth graders and sixth graders at the onset of puberty would be in about that, that same schooling place. And this would also allow kids to avoid transition after grade three, when they still may be a little bit less mature and a little less prepared to make that move. It does not diminish the number of transitions in the Hopkinton public schools. The number of transitions is the number of transitions. Programmatically, oops, that's, that's a typo there. K to 4 is actually taught by generalists, not by, not K to 5. So if you think about a 56 school in grade five, that's where we start to departmentalize. And so we have some people who are responsible for ELA in science, while other people would be responsible for math and social studies, for example. If you put those two grades under one roof, you might want to think about doing these even, even more differently programmatically. Operationally, believe it or not, a 234 school would actually help with traffic mitigation because the whole game with traffic mitigation is to pull cars off of public roads. And so when you start to build a new school, if you're able to do that, you can create queuing lines that will allow that to happen. So for example, at Marathon now, even though you would think you would have terrible traffic, you don't. And it's because we are able to, and it may get slow, but it never gets to that stand-still-stop there because of the Marathon School, because queuing is able to happen on the Marathon campus. And of course, you could have your K to 4 students on the same bus. Right now, we have one fleet of buses that are driving the Elmwood kids around, and it's, it's unusual to have two buses drive through the same neighborhood, one to pick up a first grader and a fifth grader, and another to pick up a third grader. It doesn't seem efficient that way. And we can consolidate our personnel. All right. And then fiscally, I said this on the previous slide, that the MSBA reimburses for three grades as opposed to two. Strengths and opportunities for a 56 school, developmentally, again, we look at the onset of puberty, but there are some school districts that have a fifth, sixth middle school and a seventh, eighth middle school. In talking to those districts, very often, they run what's called a parallel middle school. So they create programs that are appropriate for independent learning among, growth and independence among fifth and sixth graders, and then they cut a double debt down on that in seventh and eighth. They'll also tell you that there appears to be less reports of bullying when you pull the sixth graders out of a middle school. And sixth graders, they'll report, it's interesting when you look at grade level research, very frequently, you see mostly middle school stuff and a lot less on elementary schools. But it's, it's a challenge for your middle school sixth grader to join a school where there are seventh and eighth graders. And if you stand in the middle school hallways, you'll see that there are very little people who are sixth graders running around, especially boys. And then you see their eighth grade counterparts walking by with, you know, they're six feet tall and they have a beard. So it's, it's such a period of growth that is challenging for them. Operationally, we'd be consolidating buses 5 to 12. We'd be consolidating personnel, and grade five would have an earlier start time so that Hopkins Middle School and the high school would likely be on the same start time. And fiscally, if you're pulling grade six out of the middle school, you're opening up space in the middle school to accommodate the 200-plus, 250-plus high school students that will be arriving by 2032 in that building. Challenges and needs. The whole group expressed the need to help teachers who would have to either leave Hopkins or leave the middle school because when you leave one building where you've had a family, an educational family for a very long time, there's, there's loss. And, you know, there's no denying that, that it would be very hard to, to leave your family and integrate some, somewhere else. There was great desire to preserve sort of the exterior feel of Elmwood, like Little Fenway is sort of near and dear to everyone's heart, so could that be replicated somewhere else or at least maintained if you built that school on the current Elmwood site? And Elmwood teachers would tell you that there's a very close-knit culture of the school that came out in one of the surveys, and they would not want to lose that sort of really close-knit Elmwood family feel. We would, we talk about a 56 and 78 parallel school, but talking about that, ensuring it in, in its actual manifestation, those are two different things. So if you're going to have an upper-level school and a lower-level school, you'd have to make sure that there was a lot of collaboration in curriculum building and even in instruction and pedagogy between those, those two things. We wouldn't want to forget programming either because currently, our middle school kids in grade six have some really nice related arts, and you wouldn't want to take that away from them, but you'd want to bring it to the, to the other school. When you're thinking about a 1,200-student elementary school, that's largely unheard of in the state of Massachusetts. So how will you make a huge elementary school still have a very small school feel for kids? Along the same lines, how will you design a way to serve lunch to almost 1,200 kids over three lunch periods in an elementary school where kids are very slow in the going? And then finally, to ensure that grade four and grade six students don't regress in their social, emotional, behavioral growth, currently now they're with older kids, which typically makes all boats rise. So what will that look like if they are now put into a school where they're with their younger counterparts? And if you would like, I can stop and do my goals later so that we can get to these budget presentations because we promised them eight o'clock, and it's eight oh five.
All right. I just very quickly, before we do that, just want to do my school committee chair report. The payroll warrant S23009 is approved, warrant 23-020 is approved, and the copy of the warrants is in the packet. I also just wanted to say that we've received about 18 to 20 emails, almost all on special education. I am very excited to see so many people tuned into our budget process early. One thing that I want people at home to know, I know a lot of people here already know, is that this, tonight is actually the very beginning of our operational budget presentations and discussions. We are concluding our discussion tonight, for now anyway, for the capital budget, and we will vote on the capital budget. Capital and operational are different, both in the way they're funded and the way that we talk about them and when they're due. We won't vote on our operational budget until January, so we have a lot of opportunity to bring in community and stakeholders, look for feedback, weigh what we're hearing and considering what we're hearing with department heads against what the needs are and what people are saying in the community. We are committed to working with our stakeholders, to working with the HTA, to working with all of our department heads, to present a budget in January that best meets the needs of our students, but also with fiscal responsibility to the town that we, we do hold. So that said, I think we can move, let's say Leah's on reports actually till the end. Keep people hanging on the cliff there. And invite Dr. Zaleski up for our first budget presentation for the social education. Welcome. It's nice to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you as well.
Do you need that?
I do, thank you.
No worries. Interesting. Someone say.
Do we need to connect it?
That, that's not me. That's the TV itself. I also appreciate how much staff we have here tonight. I know that this has been a long day for everybody here that's been working.
Do you have a TV icon?
This morning, so, thank you.
I do. Screen there.
And it will say studio.
Yep.
Okay. There you go.
Can folks see that?
No.
Try this, command plus.
This, I, oh. Dr. Zaleski, is this the same as what's in the packet for people who are at home that want to view along?
It sure is. Yep. If you want to, it'll be a little bit bigger.
Great, there. Perfect.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. And so I'm going to go through the budget, and then I'll walk you through some of my analysis, and then answer any questions. So the preliminary budget, the student service budget of $14,418,585 is an increase of 10.8 from the FY '23 budget of $13,442. And this reflects increases in both salaries and total expenses. So as I walk through the personnel summary, you'll see that the FY '24 budget is a contractual increase in salaries of $258,949, as well as positions that were put in place in FY '23 due to student needs, as well as positions that were previously grant-funded and new requests totaling $446,275. So these are some of the adjustments. We did add last year, so the adjustments of the FY '23 We did add last year, so the adjustments of the FY '23 to current '24. We added a .5 moderate learning specialist at our high school. We added a 1.0 special education para at both the middle school and an ABA para at the middle school. A learning specialist at Hopkins, an ABA para at Hopkins, a .9 ABA para at pre-K, a .1 district LPN, and the points, 4, a .6, sorry, district social worker. And some of these positions were previously grant-funded that we're now putting into the budget to ensure that we have the funding to keep the services in place. So the new positions that we are requesting is a 1.0 pre-K director, a 1.0 special education curriculum director of instruction and assessment, K5, a 1.0 director of curriculum instruction and assessment, 6 through 12, and .8 clerical. And I just want to remind folks here tonight that I came before the committee in the summer, and these requests for the new positions were born out of consultancy work. Three years of data collection, analysis, work with our educators, work with myself, building-based principals, who made the recommendation for the director positions to support high-quality specialized instruction. That does exclude, though, the 6 through 12 position. As you may or may not recall, during the summer when I presented the pre-K to 5 three-year plan, I did say, at that time, that it's not lost on me that 6 through 12 absolutely will need an analysis and some support. We are undergoing right now an analysis of our grade 6 through 8 through Athena Consultancy. In an effort to be proactive with the alignment of curriculum instruction and assessment, we are putting in the 6 through 12 because we're in budget season right now. So we have that nice K-12 alignment and collaboration between directors, who again can work directly with faculty on the curriculum instruction and assessment. And then the pre-K, you know, director is to support the pre-K and all things pre-K. And the clerical increase, it supports overall operations. We're adding an increase at both the, at the pre-K level in the Marathon School. And so let's talk about the reductions. So I want to thank the educators that are here tonight. I heard both passion and concern with you coming up to the podium, and I want to recognize that because it's not lost on me, the challenges every day that our educators face at the building level. So I want to speak about how we came to this in my discussion, and maybe that'll help with some questions later on. So back in the spring, I worked with, I was actually invited to a negotiation meeting during that time just to talk about student service delivery. The HTA had asked me to do an analysis of the department in general, both with learning specialists as well as looking at related service providers. So in March, I asked the providers to share caseload and data and information with me. From there, in the summertime, I had an opportunity to look at it with the building-based administration. And then we decided collectively as a group that in September, it would be in our best interest to get most updated information and data. So I had asked all the providers to share that with me in September. So how I came to the recommendation for the reduction was based on a triangulation of data. And so let me speak to you about what that means. It was based on not only caseload data and information, which is how many students are each provider servicing, but it's also based on an analysis of year-end reporting from the educators on evaluation data, as well as an overall analysis of building-based schedules. So when I looked at those three data points and analyzed it, I then met with the educators after compiling this data, and I had a lot of questions just in terms of how we're servicing the students. And I went through, I walked them through it by OT, PT, and speech, each department, with building-based administration. At that point, I had not made the direct decision for specific reductions because from there, I had to further follow it up with a discussion with the building-based administrators to make sure that we could effectively provide students with services before we do these reductions. Now, I want to say, you know, as the Director of Student Services for the Town of Hopkinton, I'm charged with two responsibilities. First and foremost, it's to students and families, and putting forth a budget that is powerful and effective to make sure that the kids get what they need. But the second responsibility I have is to put together a morally and ethically responsible budget that's fiscally sound. And I believe that tonight's budget does those exact things. I will say that with the analysis of all that data, I do believe we can effectively operate. Student service delivery will not be affected. Students will still get what they need. I would not be putting forth a budget tonight if I thought students were going to be hurt by that. There is plenty of room in our schedules to service our students, to evaluate our students, and to analyze schedules at the building level and look at what we're doing. Also, our educators, when hired, have a commitment within their contract, within their job descriptions, to keep up with best practices in both evaluation and student service delivery. In the spirit of least restrictive environment and best practices for students, we have to look at both individualized service delivery as well as group service delivery. We want our students growing. We want them independent. We want them successful in post-secondary environments. And I think what is also of utmost importance is these director positions are put in place, like I said, from consultancy reports stating that in Hopkinton, we have this great need to oversee the instructional process. We have a great need. And I like the question you asked, Amanda, about what are our subgroups looking like with data? What, you know, let's do a deeper dive into our data here in Hopkinton about our needs. And the consultancies looked at that, and they said, we need to have directors in place to work directly with teachers to oversee the specialized instruction process. We also have a report from Athena for the ELA department, looking specifically at the middle school in grade 6 through 8, stating we need to really look at what we're doing with co-teaching. And that's part of the reason I'm putting in the 6 through 12 director, because I have that data. I have that data. So, you know, one of the questions I was asked by a member of our department, actually today, was, you know, geez, it feels like you're putting in director positions at the expense of student-facing positions. And I appreciated the honesty of that question. But my response to that was, the two are unrelated. I came before this committee in the summer with information from three years of work, unrelated to the FY '24 budget analysis. So I want the community to know that this proposal tonight is not an either-or. I have a three-year project plan to provide high-quality curriculum instruction to the students, but I also have analysis before me that says I can operate with some reductions based on the triangulation of data that the HTA asked me to provide. So with that, I'm recommending the .8 in OT reduction. .8 in PT reduction district-wide and .5 in speech district-wide. Now, the providers are divided differently across the district. Some buildings have greater needs, some buildings have lesser need. It's divided up differently, and like I said, I have the analysis of that data all compartmentalized. But in the spirit of high-quality student services, both in the area of instruction and related services, I believe we can do both with this budget. Moving on to the expense summary. The student service expense summary reflects an increase of $698,023.5% in expenses. The significant increases are in transportation and tuition. So transportation reflects an increase of $615,876 or 61% in transportation. Our collaborative accept has changed the model for transportation from an assessment model to a mileage model to cover their costs. They've also stopped, they stopped transporting our in-district students, which really had an impact on us because this necessitated adding new van vendors for transportation. And in total, the transportation increase is an increase from accept of 34% in the mileage rate to additional students who we have to account for in FY '24, and an increase from another van vendor. And if you recall, we added the addition of a yellow bus for ESY transport, which was very successful this summer. We were able to ensure that all of our students were able to get here to receive their services, and so that's something we want to keep intact. Intuitions, there's an increase in our district tuition of $76,950 to support students in our current private and collaborative placements, as well as anticipated student placements, students that we're working with right now. What has happened is the Operational Service Division, who we typically rely on for pricing increases year by year, usually increases around 3%. This year, we received a memo that they are increasing by 14%. That is a huge impact. It's a huge impact. And this price increase represents a $363,000 impact. So I want to note to the community tonight that without this 14% increase, the out-of-district tuitions would be a decrease from FY '23. We've done a good job. The educators, the service providers, my out-of-district coordinator, the team chairs, in ensuring that we're educating the students to the fullest extent in district. But this 14% increase, pricing increase, which we do not have control over, has pushed us over the limit. So the Special Education Reserve Fund that we created in FY '23 of $1,094,24 in tuition, and the same amount is planned for the FY '24 through the reserve fund. And we also offset some of this by Circuit Breaker in the amount of $1,156,546, which is a total increase of $498,750 from FY '23. So that completes the summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the budget and about the proposals for FY '24.
Can I ask just a quick follow-up on the Circuit Break, not the Circuit Breaker, on the Special Education Reserve Fund? So it looks like that's assuming the same amount coming out of the Special Education Reserve Fund as last year?
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
And can that only, that money only be used for the tuition that we have for out-of-district placements? Or is there an opportunity to use it for other things if there was additional money in there?
That's a Susan question. I would say yes, but Susan?
You can use that reserve fund for any unanticipated special education costs. Right now, we have taken, for the FY '24 budget, we have used that offset, similar to using the offset for Circuit Breaker, we use the offset for tuitions. So the anticipation is that that full amount would be used for tuitions.
But that it wouldn't be more than that? Is that the?
That's the funding level that we're looking for.
So just a double follow-up on that before we get into other questions. So we funded it last year for the first time.
Correct.
And I believe we spent everything. We project that we will spend everything, so at the end of this year, we'll be to zero.
Correct.
So we're expecting or anticipating that the town meeting will fund again at the same level.
Yes.
I guess, hold later questions. I'm clear now for when we talk about the rest of the budget.
I do have something.
Go ahead.
I spent the last 36 to 48 hours talking to community stakeholders, parents and teachers and advocates, and this is my first time going through the budget process and the first time we've actually talked about people. And to be completely honest thus far, I'm extremely disappointed. It feels like, though we are told teachers are involved in the process, based on the response we've gotten to this first budget, it feels like they're maybe not involved as much as they should be. And certainly from the perspective of a school committee member, where I am charged with approving budgets based on community needs and student needs, I would feel like if I didn't have this feedback, I wouldn't be able to make an educated decision on a budget.
We have a, I'm a mother of a special, a child that has had special needs and continues to have them, and I would say that his experience was a terrified mother of a child with special needs. And I would say his experience in the Hopkinton Integrated Preschool where he entered at 3, now as a 4th grader, has been beyond exemplar. It has been much more than I could ever have anticipated, and it's due to many of the people sitting in this room. I'm not going to cry about my son. And I feel extremely sad as a parent of a special, a child that has special educational needs, that it feels like our teachers are not being heard or trusted in what they're saying. We're talking about safety issues, we're talking about capacity issues. When we say caseload, I feel like that's a misnomer in a way because we're not talking about a one-to-one comparison. Some kids, to use like the probably least cool reference ever, like I used to be a lab chemist. One kid is a pH test, you don't need a lot of resources or time, and the other kid is a reverse phase HPLC where you need time and you need resources, and you need them now and today. I also think that this sends a mixed message to the community when we have spent the entirety of my tenure since I was sworn in in May, talking about growth. How are we addressing growth? How are we making sure our kids have the space and the resources we need? We can build the most beautiful building that we've ever seen if we do not have teachers that feel valued and trusted in those buildings. It's all for naught versus spending time screaming into a well, right? So I know that my son is not the exception, he is the rule. He is what our teachers do every day. I have friends of children that have many more needs than my own child that are fearing what will happen if, if the teachers are not supported in the way that they need to
Formally, I'd like to request that when we do keep these budget processes, particularly when we're talking about what our children see every day, that we have a teacher forum as part of the process. I know that is something that we have not done. And I know all the feedback I've received thus far has been that that's not really how we do budgeting, but I think we owe it to the community and to our students, particularly our most vulnerable students, to have as much information as possible when we're making these decisions. I, when we, also when we talk about growth, we've added everywhere. Where, tonight, we're going to be considering a $6 million upgrade to our athletic fields, which I think is wonderful and needed. And in the same breath, we're going to have a discussion about cutting OT, PT, speech, which, if I'm a parent sitting at home, what message does that send to me? I really appreciate the work of the board, and I appreciate the people that put together these budget proposals. But as a newcomer to the board and to the budget process, I feel like there's a huge opportunity for us to do better. And that's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, I have to follow up after that.
Thanks.
No, there, I did have a couple of questions, but I think, especially after trying to follow Holly here, I agree, and one of the things that I wanted to bring up was we are spending a lot of money in a lot of other areas, and it's really, we're talking about two positions, which is compared to a $6 million athletic facility is not a lot of money. And so that was one of the things that stood out to me in tonight's agenda. Excuse me. And maybe I won't get the rest of it out. Excuse me. But the second piece is the data that you use to make these decisions was data from last year. We're hearing from a lot of the educators that we already see more students who are in need. So I'm wondering if that's something that needs to be revisited as well.
So if I can give a point of clarification?
Speak right over me.
Okay, thank you. I asked for year-end data and evaluation data, but also updated data as of September this year. Yep. So, because as you know, the budget process in my presentation timeline, I have caseload data from year-end time and evaluation data that we use or report to the state. But in September, I revisited and asked for the data. So I did ask, it wasn't just FY '21, '22. So I just want to be clear on that.
Up through September.
Right, yes. And then I asked the providers when they returned to do the comparison for this year. And, you know, in special education, we're always fluctuating, but we look at the overall big picture, and the overall big picture is the year-end data, which I, the year-end evaluation data is really important because that's what they've done all year. And then the most updated caseload data and information, which I asked for in September, which led to the October review with the educators and the principals. So that is the most up-to-date information I had in preparation for tonight. It wasn't just last year, and I discounted what was taking place this year, so I just want you to know that.
And if I might also make a suggestion, sometimes when you're having conversations about staffing and reductions, that really does fall under the collective bargaining agreement and, you know, master general labor laws. And so-
So that is the most up-to-date information I had in preparation for tonight. It wasn't just last year, and I discounted what was taking place this year, so I just want you to know that.
If I might also make a suggestion, sometimes when you're having conversations about staffing and reductions, that really does fall under the collective bargaining agreement and, you know, master general labor laws. And so it might make sense for some of these questions to also be asked in an executive session.
Leah, do you have any questions?
No, I think Holly's impassioned speech was actually in the direction that I was going to go. I don't think I was going to put quite as much passion into it as she did, so I'm glad she made that statement. I think when we have this many educators concerned about something, we really have to sit and give it a hard think. I agree, we're spending a lot of money in other places, right? And I don't think this is so much a commentary on Dr. Zaleski's piece, because she only has the view of, you know, the amount of budget and people that she thinks she's going to be able to influence, but maybe it's a larger conversation at a higher level of can we balance out giving some more funds to get more people within the student services piece when we're spending so much money elsewhere, right? Like, is there a way to kind of move some money around to give the teachers the support that they're looking for? So, not so much a question, just a thought.
Yeah. So just to follow off both you and Jim, we're going to make Holly go last from here on out.
It's great to sit on a board with such smart, eloquent people. I'm very practical. You know, when you came forward in the summer, you sold me the directors. I think I asked about the six to 12 at the time, because it was not presented, and I know there is a need. So I'm not really disputing that piece. I think that made sense. And we just keep growing and growing and growing, and you're one person. I mean, there is a structure, but I think it's very realistic to think that these positions can influence the kinds of education that we're giving, can make sure it's consistent, can bridge the gap across K to five and six to 12 and smooth the transitions. I think there's a lot that these directors can do. So for me, that piece is kind of, I'm fine with that. And I greatly appreciate all of the letters that we received and the detail and the time, the data that was put into, all the thought that went into those letters. It was very educational to read them. And I do echo what my colleagues have said. I just, I struggle with our growth and our preschool growth and the growth of our needs. I struggle as a district budget to think that this is the right place to cut. And I know that these highly skilled, talented resources are hard to come by. And I worry, even if we think in the next year, we think we can get by, I just don't feel like I want to let go of our talent in this space, because we know the direction of our enrollment. It's going up. And even if through our directors, we can be, you know, super efficient or whatever, I just feel like this is not where I'd want to cut. And we didn't talk about the subgroup data on MCAS, but we have some work to do. And there are gaps, there are gaps between what we're doing and what we're doing for some of these populations in comparison to our other peer districts. And we hear from parents, and so I really appreciate, as a taxpayer, I really appreciate how hard you work to try to balance the competing demands. And I know that a lot of energy went into this, but as a school committee member, I just am not comfortable with cutting these positions, you know? Given, again, even if we could squeeze by next year, I don't know, from what we've heard, I don't know that that would even work, but even if it did, I don't want to lose the talent we have. It's too hard to find this talent. We're going to have to turn around and hire in a year or two. I think one of the letters showed the sort of hiring and cutting back and increasing patterns over years, and I think that is realistic. We try really hard to be fiscally responsible, but this just doesn't feel like the right place, you know? So I don't really have any questions. I appreciate your work and the work of our educators.
So thank you for all of your analysis that went into this. I also, just in recognizing how hard you've worked over the years you've been in the district at getting grant money, and some of what comes in as an increase is really because in years past, we haven't had to fund it out of our operational budget. That is a real strength of yours and much appreciated.
Thank you.
I also know that the director positions, like Amanda, when you came the summer, I really appreciated the thought that went into that and how these positions can help in many ways that maybe not immediately apparent to people that are thinking, wow, you're looking at adding administrative positions. I also know that a lot of districts, when they hit like 4,000 kids, they start looking at hiring another administrator to do the special ed separate from student services, which I'm going to have to guess is probably a significant increase as well, so that I guess in some ways I'm thankful that we're not quite there and that we can break it into smaller pieces. I also echo some of the things that others have said. I would rather give your department more money, because, and I appreciate how fiscally responsible you are and that you come to us with the message that we've put out, which is that, from the town, which is that funds are limited. And that's a reality that we have to figure out with our town partners. I know Mr. Manning from Appropriations is here, and I know that Mrs. Birchman is watching from home, as well as the Select Board people. So I know that they are looking at what we're doing, and they calculate out the numbers and probably in their head and think, wow, what is that school committee doing? But what you're doing is so important, what our educators are doing with you is so important. I would rather try to give you a little bit more.
Thank you.
Would be my inclination for some of the same reasons my colleagues have said.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I think you do a great job with data, and we have received so much data. I'm not sure my head can kind of process any more data at this point tonight, so.
And you're actually one of the few people who, every time you come with an ask, you come with a funding source. You know, when you need a new parrot, it's, I want to get this grant, right? And, you know, you are always cognizant of the cost of the services that you're asking to provide. We really appreciate that. We've commented on that before, and it's reflected in your efforts to deliver something for the town.
Thank you.
I also want to acknowledge, I did, I had the opportunity to speak with our CPAC president this week, and really, one of the things that she was saying is that there are so many people who move into town, who are moving here in part because of our special education services and how outstanding they are in wanting to really keep supporting you in that work.
Thank you, and I should mention that as well, because I did have a conversation with Jen Halliday yesterday, and we had a lovely conversation, both about parent worry with the budget and also complimentary in terms of the work that we've done and how to balance this. You know, and I assured her I'll do whatever I can to continue to, you know, assure parents and work with families, whatever the outcome, to make sure students get what they need. And so I appreciated that conversation. She couldn't be here tonight, but again, I appreciated her taking the time out of her busy day yesterday to have a lengthy conversation with me.
And in that regard, the other thing I had said to her is that this is an ongoing process for us, that certainly people who have things they want to add on special education or any other piece of our budget are welcome to come between now and, it's like mid-January when we vote this. So it's a marathon, not a sprint.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Mike, do you want to come up? Do you have any questions?
I do.
Excellent. It's so nice that we have such a good audience, but I couldn't quite see you back there. I follow this. Welcome. Thanks for coming out to another meeting.
Thank you for inviting me here. I do appreciate it. As usual, Dr. Zaleski usually comes really well-prepared with numbers that are all there and very clear to me. I do have two questions. First one, I didn't do my homework from last year's budget, but I recall in last, in the last year at this time, did you, we had nine, was it nine new? I can't remember the exact number, but we hired nine for special ed last year. There was some, there was a pretty decent increase. I just want to get the numbers straight. And then you, in this fiscal year '23, you brought in another six, and now you're planning in this one, in this budget cycle, four. Is that...
I'd have to look at the numbers and compare FY '23 and FY '24 executive summaries. So I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, you know, over the last two years, we've been pretty good at, you know, providing for what your needs are, and I just want to make sure there's an understanding of what was in last year's or fiscal year '23 budget that's already in the budget.
Mike's just looking at it.
Oh, great, thank you.
So in the executive summary for the FY '23 budget, the new positions that were requested was a 1.0 intensive pre-K teacher, three ABA paras for preschool, a .2 speech at preschool, 1.0 nurse district-wide, and a one ABA for the high school.
So is that six?
Three, four, five, six.
Okay.
Point two.
I was just making sure I understand that.
Thank you.
I was close.
Yep.
The second question is for Susan Rutherford on this, the reserve, the Special Education Reserve. And I know there are other questions, I'd just like to have a good understanding of, you know, who's funded last year, where we're at, and what is needed in the funding source for this year. I know you don't have the answer, you don't have all the answers now, but it's something that would be, I think, a few people are interested in.
Right, so in terms of the funding source, obviously, I don't determine the funding sources. That comes from Tim O'Leary on the town side. They are aware, and I've had several conversations even before we have begun our budget presentations, that we have that need to fund that reserve fund again. So whatever sources, you know, as he's putting together his sources and uses, he is aware that that will be part of what we'll be looking for.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. So, thank you so much. I know you've also had a long day.
It's okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Appreciate all that. That then brings us into our next budget presentation, which is Dr. Gosch, who is, I do see back here in the back, for technology. It's been a little while since we've had the opportunity to have you here.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it. Just got to see if I can get connected to the network. How's everyone today?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
We know someone in technology if you need to. You can't get connected to the network, we're all in.
Exactly. Seems like it's working, so just give me a second. No pressure.
We're a healthy bunch.
I know, right? We'll time it better. Nice study undercurrent of coughing.
You could time it, you could do it at the same time.
Yeah, well, that's...
Like a little chorus.
Not sure if it's likely slideshow mode, but see if I can get it to work one more time. I'll just go forward. Why don't we go with this? I'm going to make it as big as I can. So what I've done is just kind of digitize and put the executive summary that I shared with all of you into kind of a slide format. So this really is the technology update for FY '24. And before I kind of get into some of the new numbers, I just thought I'd talk about the base and where we are today in terms of finishing some of the projects from FY '23. So with some of the capital items that we were awarded last, this current year, and the budget, we've started upgrading the closets in the high school and middle school, which are our network closets, which connect the main, MDF we call them, where all the servers are to the surrounding closets throughout these buildings. We've been upgrading those connections with fiber optics to kind of increase the speed, which ultimately gives staff and students faster connections and access to the internet and digital resources. So that's underway and almost done. We've been doing some work with one of our senior students, Alex Tannenbaum, to network all of our audio and AV products, from music departments to the various auditoriums. And some of you have seen that work with the Elmwood Projects, where we've been able to, you know, produce and broadcast with robotic cameras in the high school. So some of that work is underway. We're still waiting for some of the new lighting to come in because of COVID delays on some of the products. We're waiting on some of the lights for the high school auditorium, but that currently has started. A lot of the new curtains are up and ready, and Tim's done great work getting the floors and things prepared, so those spaces are coming along. We finally completed our seven-year, it's really greater-than-seven-year security project, which was a combination with our work with the town and the schools. All the camera systems, the key fob access systems are all finally complete throughout all of the buildings, which is pretty exciting. We're upgrading our main broadband connection to be much larger, to 10 gigabytes, which should be up any day. We were told it was ready today. So over the last 10 years, we've been stuck around one gigabyte. We're finally moving up to 10 to help increase the bandwidth for students and staff. We're still maintaining four-year lease cycles for all teacher devices throughout the district. That's still current. We're maintaining three-year lease cycles for our Chromebooks for our students. We've started a new staff evaluation platform. This is year two of that process, and that's going pretty well. We're bringing on additional staff this year. And we've also upgraded some of our new, our ticketing system that the technology department uses for managing all of the help desk tickets, and a new system called Visor, which is our inventory system to help track all of these devices that we have to have. So that's kind of our base for this year. A lot of those are coming along. In terms of the budget overview in comparison to the executive summary that I shared with you, the proposed budget for FY '24 reflects an increase of $98,479 this coming year, which is about a 4% increase over last year. The idea and the main purpose of the technology budget is to support three key areas, which is really operating systems and infrastructure, staffing, and then instructional technology, which is mostly composed of hardware and software. In terms of the technology priorities for FY '24, we're looking to kind of improve our data analytics platforms to support a lot of the work that you heard through Mr. LeBrod's presentation on MCAS, the special educators, and all that data that gets produced is primarily stored in Power School, our student information system. But being able to put it into a dashboard where teachers can quickly and easily have insights into what's available or how their students are performing or growing is really vital. And we're really not there yet. We have a lot of that data and a lot of different siloed platforms still, and getting that data into one dashboard setup is time-consuming and difficult, and that's a goal for us in terms of this year and moving forward. So we're working on that. We're going to start a password management pilot with our administrators, really looking at beefing up our security and making sure administrators can safely manage all the passwords and access that they have to all these platforms. It's really important, as they are a primary group that's often targeted with phishing schemes throughout our district, and we need to make sure we're protecting against that. We're also spending and investing in more of our network infrastructure in terms of security, making sure our firewalls and things of that nature are up to date and protecting us from critical attacks. And then maintenance is another big priority. We have a lot of hardware and devices to repair throughout the district. And then the last component is really making sure we have instructional software to support learning in key areas, whether it's intervention programs, reading enrichment, special math programs. We support all of that as a technology department. In terms of like the hardware side, just to give you kind of an overview of where we are with the district, in terms of what we call really the trinity of the key pieces of equipment that we provide all educators in the classroom, hasn't changed. It's really making sure they have a projector, making sure they have access to a computer, and making sure they have access to a document camera. We've maintained that for 10-plus years really as a district, and we've worked towards that. And so a lot of this budget maintains that equipment and supports leases and structures that do that. So this coming school year, if you look at this chart, I know it's kind of hard to see, but the staff, the staff lease column, which shows you that we rotate our teacher laptop leases so that we're not renewing every single teacher device every year. So this coming year, our budget would support a new lease for the middle school. So that's why... why this would show year one. So in FY 24, we would start a new lease for middle school teachers. And then moving forward, you know, the high school would be on year three next year, and then the elementary schools would be on year four. And what year four means in this scenario is that we're not actually paying for that device in year four. So it's a three-year lease, and year four is our, kind of our free year where we're not paying for them. And so balancing these out over a period of time really helps prevent any big spikes and purchasing of equipment from year to year. The student devices, you can see the ratios in that one column is really, we've maintained one-to-one now in all of our buildings and classrooms since really pre-COVID, so we're in a pretty good position even before COVID hit, making sure that all of our students and staff had devices. So numbers have been going up, obviously, as you know, with enrollment, but we're still maintaining a one-to-one ratio for our students. In terms of personnel summary, we are looking to remove one position this year, which would be the loss of a website manager. We've had extensive talks, you know, between Dr. Kavanagh and myself. We currently had a position posted last year, which was great, there's still really a need for that position, but based on all the other FTEs that we're looking at as a district, we have to kind of reconsider whether this is the best position to maintain at the moment. So we're gonna look to try to restructure that position internally in our department, try to spread some of that work out over other departments to see if we can make that work for this coming year. It's also been a pretty hard position to regain. We lost the person, and they're now, you know, re-employed in another position internally, but we have not been able to replace someone in that position because the market has been so tough. So we're gonna take that opportunity, since we can't hire somebody, to try to reorganize first and reassess, and then maybe come back in FY 25 with another recommendation. If at all, my suggestion in future years would maybe be focusing on more of the data services side, which is a bigger need, and sharing some of the website work with maybe a data service person. So we're gonna reassess and come back with more information about that, but that's where we are with personnel. Form three is just a $6,000 ask for overtime funds for current staff. This usually helps us run events if we need to. Typically, our technicians are asked to stay after to run graduation or a public forum, and if they've worked all week, we're usually having them kind of stay to cover those events, and we often have to pay them overtime. So this, this amount covers some of those events that pop up throughout the school year. In terms of the expense summary, one of our main services, our contracted service account, this account really supports all of our core district-wide systems like Power School and some of the big systems. That account, this coming year FY 24 is gonna be down, you know, a huge amount, around $3,000 or less. We're trying to reduce some of the tools that we may no longer need now that COVID hopefully has kind of passed, maybe looking at, right, reducing some of our Zoom licenses and things that we may not need on a regular basis across a large group of people, and so that number's come down. Our technology infrastructure number is up by about $78,000, and primarily, this increase supports district maintenance account in one area, so we have a district account that supports all of the repairs for all of our stuff, and that account's gone up from around $75,000 to $90,000. So it's a $15,000 increase. We haven't increased that account in around 10 years. So with inflation going up, the cost of repairs going up, it's time to kind of boost that number a little bit. We're running short already this year in that account. And then the second component of the infrastructure area is really the security piece, and it's addressing some of our network safety and security, and specifically in some of our virtual environments. We host servers internally, we run a bunch of virtual, you know, servers, if you will, on those machines, and we need to protect those virtual servers against various attacks. So it's getting some software and tools to help protect those virtual environments. So that's where some of the big increases are, really across my budget this year. The continuation of the expense summary, AV supplies not really changing drastically. That $3,000 increase is really plus or minus one projector across the whole district, that's what we're looking at for that account. Instructional technology is up $46,000 roughly. This is gonna help cover, we have a new Chromebook lease starting across Hopkins and Elmwood, so we have a current lease expiring of around 850 Chromebooks. Those will be going back, and we'll be looking at a new lease for those devices. And then the other component of that is due to the new teacher lease I talked about at the middle school, and redoing the graphic design lab at the middle school. That lab hasn't been done in just about five years, and it's time to upgrade the graphics lab at the middle school. The last component is instructional software, that's up $34,000, and these really, these, some of these accounts are up as a result of adoption of grant-funded curricular trials that we've been working on last year that have kind of migrated over to my budget now that they're out of a trial, trial period. The last kind of slide that I have for you this evening is just expense continued. Library accounts are up $2,500, which is really covering our library management tools, hand or research-type accounts, like JSTOR and other tools that are used for doing research throughout the district. And then finally, the professional development count I have down, about $7,000 this year to help offset some of the costs of the increases and the other accounts. And that's my budget, mostly in a nutshell, hopefully under 15 minutes, but I'm happy to entertain questions.
So, let's start with Jenna. Go ahead, Holly.
Well, I have a feeling that my question is a man's question, I saw you, so I will defer to him because it was your baby in the first place, so I know, go ahead.
No, no.
Well, I appreciate the challenges of hiring someone to manage the website, but I know that you spent so much time on that website not so long ago, and maintaining it and keeping it up to date were one of the things that I know that was a primary focus. So, I mean, that's a tricky thing, to get rid of that position and farm it out to folks who are already working pretty, pretty hard in their own sort of lanes. Is it really feasible, do you think? I mean, I know you presented it as feasible, but like...
I think we're willing to try it. I know we've gone back and forth with, you know, I definitely was pro having this position, and we wanted to make sure that we had adequate personnel to manage a main component of how we really communicate with the community, right? So it's a vital tool and piece that provides information to all of the community members. And so, and before we had updated the website, we definitely had some challenges maintaining it kind of on a daily basis, so that information was accurate on demand. That being said, after having this position, I think, yes, there has been some benefits where I feel like our social media posts, things of that nature, news-worthy information was posted on a regular basis, and I think that was improved. I think where there's still some weaknesses that we have to work on is that a lot of that information is housed within departments, right? And those departments are the experts and have the knowledge, and so they still have to take that information and put it in a manageable format to then share to the webmaster, but then has to put it in a format that they want done, right? So the question becomes, like, how efficient is that? You know, by the time they're sharing and preparing that in a Google Doc or however they get to the webmaster, maybe they could have done that themselves and just updated their website. So there's that piece to analyze, so that's just one component of many things, but then you're right, on the backend, the data side of it, as we have new staff, for example, starting up, and we have to add them to the new directories in there, and things of that nature where a data person could do, I think that is something that a centralized person should be doing, whereas I still think there could be some trade-offs with the departments and looking at the departments. So I still think there's a need for support, I think we can, we can manage some of that, but maybe it's open for further discussion. I don't want to get rid of it for good, but I think we need to at least figure out how to restructure to make it as efficient as possible, considering what we just heard from special ed department and other areas where maybe there's stronger needs. I'm happy to entertain other options as we move forward, but I think at the moment, we're gonna try, at least for the time being, but I'm open to suggestions.
Leah?
Did you have any questions?
Yeah, actually, you said that, you know, due to the market, so that got me thinking, is it, is it a problem with, you know, salary, like equivalent salaries to what somebody might get in a private corporation? Or is it just a dearth of people who are doing web design who are out in the market right now? Because I thought the market was saturated, so I figured it was probably salary-related.
To be honest, when we first published the position, we had four applicants, and those applicants didn't really have even the qualifications to be interviewed. So that was, that was the first challenge. So we, I don't even think we could get to a salary conversation because we couldn't get them to the interview position.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so maybe because, you know, they didn't apply because of the salary, but I think, yes, if you're looking at a corporate job where you're actually designing and building websites, the salary's gonna be much higher, but I think if we look at this as more of a content management position really than a coding position, and it's more of a communication position, I think that could be one area where we maybe restructure the job description to try to reattract other people. So I don't, I don't think it's initially the salary, but I think in the end, when we go to pick the right person, that could be a component.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. If you're, if you're not looking for a lot of heavy coding and you're more looking for copy management, that's definitely a difference. Okay, thank you so much.
I was actually, I actually wrote down, because I'm intrigued by your networking help from students, if there was any thought of using students to support either at the departmental level or, you know, sort of the content pieces, like an internship, so you don't have to answer now, but that's kind of what I jotted down as a fun thought. But my question was on the overtime funds. Is that incremental overtime funds, or is that the, do we not typically budget overtime for this department? Is that the $6,000, is that new? Have we not actually had a budget overtime before?
We had, I think, it in the budget last year, the same amount last year.
So is this an increase of $6,000?
I think it's not an increase, and Susan can correct me if I'm wrong, it's just adding another $6,000 to support the FY 24 budget. It's not, it's not $12,000, whereas last year was $6,000. Six thousand.
So year on year, there's, is there an additional, like normally we see a delta, so it's really flat.
Yeah, it's just a $6,000. I would see it as a pool of $6,000 where we can use to charge against when there's an event and we have to pay overtime for a staff member.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, now, and technology is the backbone of, you know, the district in terms of like enabling everybody to be successful in their work, whether it's administrative or teaching or whatever, so, you know, it's required. I appreciate the work on security. I'm really thrilled that you finished the safety plan for the buildings, because I know that's been a long time. We've been plodding along, and it was impressive that we were so quick to get that in place, and it's great that we finished it.
Yeah, I guess my only other question is, just if you could comment, I know we hear about like the tuition increases for special ed, we hear about the construction increases for the marathon addition. Are the, some of the licensing increases, are those headcount, or are those like the cost of like school dude, is now going up?
It's both, right? So it's definitely an increase of students. You're right, when I started in this role, it was 3,400 students, when I looked yesterday doing this, it was 4,200 in Power School. So that's a huge number of students where we've had to buy additional licenses for, that's a component of it. And then the second part is that the per, cost per license has gone, has gone up quite a, quite a bit. You know, so maybe they're just taking advantage of us now that it's post-COVID, right? And I think some, some companies lured you in to this, these freemium, right, products during COVID time, and then they kind of, I hate to say the word trap you, but people get used to using them, and then, then they charge you an arm and leg to try to, to try to, you know, continue using those services. So that is the challenge, and that's why we've tried to review some of those products and remove some of the ones that we're not using, but it is both.
Thank you. That's affirmative.
So Holly, did you have any questions?
Thank you. I, I feel like this is such a humble document for how much work you do for this district, and I thank you for, like, I get weird emails and send them to you and you fix it, and I appreciate that. Like, you do so much incredible work. My kids are both better at technology than I am, so that's also good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Leah, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, but it's not totally about the budget. So I love to see your presentation. I'm also a tech person, right, so I, I'm a data scientist, and back when I was in Pittsburgh, I helped run like a multi-school district big data competition. And considering that data science and that machine learning and AI, and all those things are becoming, are, have become some of the top fields for students to go into, I would love to see kind of, you know, off-budget season, we never get to see you very much, kind of like long-term strategies, or, you know, how do we bring in GPUs? How do we allow students more ability to like touch technology that will prep them for some of, you know, for going to university, for doing some of these positions? Like, what does that look like? And I'm sure we have an educational program that's computer science, but I know that in high school, there usually isn't the big data, data science, et cetera, slang. So I would love, you know, to chat more and to hear more about, you know, plans, or how to bring in the, all of that kind of tech into the, into the school.
Yeah, that would be great. I'd be interested in that. That's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm bringing up the rear, technology is not my, my strength, so some of these, these things are above my, my technology savviness, but I appreciate the budget that you brought forward, and also, like my colleagues, I really appreciate how much of a backbone you are to making sure that things get done in the district with the technology, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, you know, also a long day for you. Mr. Person, you've been waiting very patiently.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, did you, I'm sorry. I'm actually good.
Tim, do you need the... I should be disconnected, so sometimes it doesn't seem like you're connected, but if you actually are, it's kind of interesting. Are you still there?
It takes a minute, but you know. See if I can get it off. Can I go, can I tromp you?
Yeah, you can try.
Chuck's gonna need to come to all the budget presentations. It just kind of disappeared out of there. All right, let's see, is it coming up there? Let's see. I've got yours on. It's not mirrored yet, so I'm gonna mirror it. You locked out your own system preferences. Oh, there it is.
I think you guys intentionally locked me out of a lot of things.
You got extended, so let me just see if this will do it.
I can bring it up, for sure.
For sure?
Yeah.
All right, I'll...
If you want to throw him off.
Yeah. Sorry.
So the first thing in my budget's gonna be a new computer?
No, it's just the setting. Yeah, it's just not mirrored, so it's extending, it's extending that screen and it's not mirrored, that's all. But I should be off, Susan, if you can grab it.
All right. Let me get shares back.
And one FTE and tech support.
We do this by 700 staff members and 4,000 students with just five techs.
Incredible. This was planned so that we...
Those ones are mine.
Thank you. It's all hell there.
Thanks, buddy. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Feel like it's been a long time since I've seen everybody.
I feel like you must really like us, because you keep coming back.
Mike's trying to get me to pay taxes in this town, I'm here so much.
At least exercise.
That's right. So I'm presenting our, you know, fiscal year 2024 budget. This one's gonna reflect an increase of 10.5%.
I feel like you must really like us because you keep coming back.
Mike's trying to get me to pay taxes in this town. I'm here so much.
At least exercise.
That's right. So I'm presenting our, you know, fiscal year 2024 budget. Um, this one's going to reflect an increase of 10.5% of $374,871. I probably could have rounded that. I feel like the cents are very important. Um, and an overall budget of $3,952,231.50. So really where it's going to increase is two main areas. Uh, my personnel summary. So between raises, um, step raises, regular coal raises, and then requesting a new floating custodial position. Really why I'm looking for that position is to help out in the schools when we have absentees of custodians. So I, I really see that position floating into spaces, um, helping out those buildings to A, keep them clean, which is important, and B, cut down on some of the custodial overtime that we've incurred over the last couple of years. Um, and the other one is the expense summary. There's, um, two real main increases in the expense summary, and that's going to be in the electric and in the gas. So even with the offset of 102,000 of anticipated solar savings, um, we're going to see about a 35% increase in our electricity costs, which is good compared to the state average, I think is 64%, um, but not great because it's a 35% increase and also a 14% increase in, um, gas rates. Uh, the other increase we'll see is the custodial supplies. Um, so that's due to a few things. I think it's supply chain issues that we've been having. Trash bags are a little more expensive. Toilet paper is a little more expensive. And we're using more of it, you know, as we've talked about enrollment growth and all that stuff. That really affects the things that maybe we don't see day to day. So we're using more trash bags, more toilet paper, more paper towels, more hand soap, which is great. We want, we want that stuff to keep being used. So, um, those are the increases that we'll see. Um, we will see a decrease is in the extraordinary maintenance budget. And so the extraordinary maintenance budget, as you guys will remember from year to year, will fluctuate a little bit. Um, and that's, um, just kind of extra maintenance, extra maintenance that doesn't really fit into the operating budget and is too low to go into the capital budget. So you'll see in the extraordinary maintenance. Um, so the Elmwood School, although I know we're looking at a new school, uh, to build a new school, um, I think we still really kind of need to maintain it for our students and staff up to, you know, a livable space, you know? It is nice space. I don't mean to say it's not livable, but, um, we want to kind of continue on making sure it's a safe, comfortable space for the people while we're occupying the building, you know, potentially for the next five years if everything goes, um, to plan. Uh, the Hopkins School, uh, we're looking to do some flooring, some interior painting, some HVAC repairs, um, and HVAC point-to-point testing. So I know we've talked about that in the capital budget with the high school. That was, um, that turned out to be a capital project. This, this one would, uh, much less equipment, much less point-to-point, really fit into our extraordinary maintenance. Um, same effect as what we had talked about in capital as far as picking up energy efficiencies and, and deficiencies, showing us what's not working correctly, what we can improve to make our buildings run more efficient. Uh, not only for, um, cost savings, uh, electricity-wise and gas-wise, but also for, uh, comfortability, you know? So, um, that's what a lot of that testing will help us with. Um, domestic water booster pump, these are just kind of end-of-life things that will, that we're starting to come up with again that fall underneath the $25,000 capital repairs. Uh, the middle school, um, we need some additional custodial equipment such as floor machines, scrubbers, that type of thing. Um, we want to continue on with , uh, painting projects that we've done over the last couple of years. Uh, flooring, if anybody's been through the flooring in that space, you'll see a lot of cracks and a lot of stuff that's starting to deteriorate. Want to kind of take care of those things. And then again, HVAC repairs such as motors, exhaust fans, that type of thing. Um, the high school, 47,000, um, like HVAC repairs, you're going to see that through all of the schools, uh, new flooring, interior painting, and kitchen equipment. Um, a lot of our kitchen equipment will come underneath, again, the capital budget that will start replacing reach-in refrigerators, milk coolers, that kind of stuff as it's coming to end of life. Um, and then district-wide is for some maintenance equipment such as lawn mowers, snow blowers, that type of thing. And a bulk of that is actually for parking lot striping. Um, we were able to do the marathon in Elmwood Schools this year, and I'd really like to do the rest of the campus, um, coming up next year. Um, as, um, you guys have heard from year to year, we take offsets from the parking, parking is my Worcester accent coming out, the parking revolving account of 45,000 and from the building use account of 150,000. Um, the building use account really goes into contracted services, um, where I didn't really make any changes. I was able to, through that account, kind of swap things in and out to make that level fund. So that's the, it's not exciting like Karen's or pretty like a Shokes, but that's the facilities, uh, budget for 2024, a suggested budget for 2024. I'm happy to take any questions that you can ask my time.
Excellent. So, um, Leah, did you have any questions? Just jumping around here.
No, I did no. As always, a very thoughtful presentation about what we will need and the growth of students and facilities. Um, I, I'm, uh, yeah, thank you for all the work you do.
Amanda?
I have no questions. You are equally foundational, like, like tech, tech, and this is all like the backbone of the district. You guys, you know, maybe not glamorous. Much appreciated, all the work you do. And, um, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Holly, have you noticed that, uh, like with the kitchen equipment, we have more kiddos probably buying lunch? Is this something that has impacted like the wear and tear and the life of our kitchen equipment?
Um, I don't, I don't know if it's, that's necessarily the case. I mean, I think if you're cooling, you know, 12 containers of milk at 24, it's the same. Um, I think it's just really kind of starting to come to end of life. Or, um, you know, we have a company that comes in and does a service for us, like preventative maintenance. So they'll stop making recommendations on some of the equipment. Um, for an instance, we had a reach-in refrigerator down at Elmwood that was not working correctly. And we got the estimated cost to repair it was $2,200, which is almost this, you know, it makes more sense to buy a new piece of equipment in that case rather than just throw good money after bad. So, um, so those are the things that we're starting to see, um, upfront. And I think getting ahead of that to make sure that we're not, you know, selling spoiled milk is an important thing.
That's a pretty, that's a pretty good rule. Thank you.
Our students appreciate it.
No, I mean, I don't have a question either, but I do have one, I guess, maybe it is a question. Um, I'm glad that you're asking for the revolving custodial, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And, um, it made me remember how you did an amazing presentation about how to keep the schools clean at certain tiered levels of cleanliness expectations. And that was probably several, several hundred students ago that you made that determination. So it made me wonder if we are at, approaching another sort of tipping point where something like that might be an appropriate thing to look at again. And, you know, I defer to you, but I, that's what made me think.
Yes. So it's, it's things that we've talked about, you know, throughout the last couple of years as well. I think this position is really going to help us, um, make sure we're maintaining the level of cleanliness that we're looking for. Um, I think as we grow and add, keep adding additions and new buildings and stuff, we'll, we'll revisit that again as well to add positions.
So I had a question just to make sure that I understood correctly because when I was reading it, I was thinking something different. The energy differences already take into account the solar, that what we hope to offset with the solar?
Yeah, the proposed solar.
I shoot, I have to tell you, I was thinking to myself, okay, the solar will help offset that a little.
Well, it really has. That would have been a much larger number, $102,000 more without that, right? So I, I guess it has.
It has, but I was hoping, I was hoping to bring it down even more. I, I know that homeowners are feeling similar problems.
I just got my little bill yesterday. I'm not a happy man today.
And I was, you know, I'm glad that you brought up the garbage bags and the toilet paper increases. Everything I know is going up in price. It's unfortunate that some of the toilet paper hoarders from the pandemic didn't send it this way at the end.
That would have been nice. That would have been nice and probably a little better quality than.
No comment. Anyway, I, I don't have any other questions. I appreciate, as always, your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Have to keep this run going where you're here, like, you know.
I know. What do we have next week?
You know, we'll find something.
I'm still waiting for someone for a Thanksgiving Day invitation to dinner.
Something. So, and I just want to make sure I don't skip over. Mike, do you have any questions for appropriations?
I'm good, very clear.
Thank you. All right. You two have had a long day. So, thank you. Thank you. You have.
I just know, here's the capital at the end. Tim's here, I'm sure.
Yeah, we could, you know, we could skip ahead. Do you want to skip ahead and do the capital budget in case anybody had any questions for you? Is that okay to hold you for a couple more minutes?
Sure, of course.
All right. So we're going to jump a little bit down to old business. Um, I, you know, actually, let's do the CPC ones are listed first. Let's do the CPC grant, Marathon School Playground, um, 4A. Mrs. Rotherback, if you want to go over that, just.
Do you want me to just jump to those?
That would be great. I appreciate it, too. I did see this is all up on the website for people to be able to follow along that, um, and to have looked at it. I did not receive any additional questions about, um, capital. I don't know if anybody else did.
Okay. Um, so with this up, I don't see what the order is on the agenda. So we'll just.
That's it first.
We'll go in slide order. So the Marathon Playground for, um, 1 million. So again, the Marathon School was built with a planned enrollment of 395 students. The enrollment is currently over 592 students. Marathon holds 42 recess periods per day. The existing playground is not able to accommodate the increased enrollment. And a Community Preservation Act funding application has been submitted for this project.
Are there any additional questions? I know we have discussed it a couple of times, but some things maybe popped up.
We're talking right now about a motion to approve the CPC application, right?
Right. Um, as part of the capital request. Uh, so, and just on the Marathon School Playground. Is there anybody who feels, um, like they would like to make a motion on that?
I'll, I'll motion to approve this CPC application as part of the FY24 capital request of 30,952,389 dollars for the Marathon School Playground.
So is that, 30 million is not for the playground?
It's, it's 1 million. Part of the, I just, I just read it.
It's the CPC application is part of the capital request.
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. Is there, the motion by Holly, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jen? All those in favor? And you know, actually, because we have Leah here remotely, I'd like to just go ahead and do a roll call vote. So Holly?
Yeah.
It's okay to start with you?
Yes.
Jen? Leah?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, and that passes. Thank you. And that brings us into the CPC grant for the High School Track and Field 3.
Thank you. Um, so again, the track and field three within amenities building was identified as a priority to increase the safety, equity, and access for students and the community. The track is at the end of its useful life. Resurfacing the track will not address the base layer deterioration. Expanding field three increases the utilization, and there is not enough seating for events. A Community Preservation Act funding application has been submitted for this project.
Are there any questions on the High School Track and Field 3 as the CPC application? Is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
I'll do it. I'll do this. I move to approve the CPC application as part of the FY24 capital request of 30,952,389 dollars for the High School Track and Field 3.
A motion by Holly, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jen? We'll do a roll call again, starting with Holly.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I am also an aye, and that also passes. Um, and then we'll go directly into the FY24 capital plan, just in case anybody has a question, uh, that Tim might be able to answer on that as well.
Okay. Um, so this is really, uh, the same presentation that you have seen over the last two meetings. However, it has been shortened really to just be a summary. So again, the five-year look ahead is, has been within each of them. So the FY24 capital plan request is the end-of-life replacement cycle is one vehicle for 70,000, technology district-wide for 75,000, HVAC variable air volume replacement and controls for 157,000, HVAC district-wide for 1,250, loop road paving and sidewalks for 1,500. Efficiency and deficiency testing is the HVAC point-to-point testing of 98,520. We just went over the Marathon Playground of 1 million, which has a CPC application. The High School Track and Field 3 of 5,801,130 also has a CPC application. And in addition to the Hopkins School of 21 million. So again, the vehicle, 70,000, vehicle represents a replacement of one of four vehicles for the eight maintenance staff. The vehicles are used for maintenance, towing, plowing, sanding throughout the district. The vehicles are incurring costly repairs, and this will begin a replacement plan, uh, to improve efficiency and effectiveness. System-wide technology upgrades of 75,000 is to replace, uh, roughly half of the 400 wireless access points district-wide. And this is, uh, currently a five-year replacement cycle, and we would also be eligible for E-rate reimbursement for a part of this cost. The HVAC variable air replacement and controls at 157,000. These were identified through a point-to-point testing that was done on AHU air handling unit four and six. This resulted in 12 units that are not functioning and the needs for the controls. These are end-of-life replacements. HVAC district-wide, uh, the replacements represents large air handling units and rooftop units. FY24 proposal is to replace three of nine units at Hopkins School and one of nine units at the high school, and these are end-of-life replacements. Loop road paving and sidewalks, approximately 1.5 miles of road to be repaired, as well as the sidewalks, for 1.5 million. The HVAC point-to-point testing at the high school for 98,520 is the retrocommissioning of all HVAC equipment at the high school that is connected to the building management system. And the goal is to review and ensure the bu, building is running at its optimal performance. We just went over the Marathon Playground. We also went over the High School Track and Field 3. And lastly, the Hopkins School addition for 21 million. The Hopkins School is currently unable to fit two grades. The estimated addition is roughly 30,000 square feet at $700 a square foot. Our current designer for the Elmwood School, Perkins Eastman, is conducting a district-wide campus study, and that will further refine the space, uh, square footage needed as well as the cost impact. So this number, uh, could change. For right now, this is an estimate. So again, that is the summary of all the items that are being requested for a capital plan for this year. And if there are any questions?
Thank you. So I, I want to acknowledge, we asked a little bit more of you this year with regard to the capital plan. We did push it out. We had a public forum, um, and really wanted, because it is a, a large, um, capital need that we have this year, just to thank you for the extra time you put into all of this for us and, and allowed us to have the extra time. So thank you. Typically, we do vote the entire thing together if there's anybody that wants to pull any projects out to discuss separately.
I have some questions.
Okay.
I guess, um, we heard from Jeff Rowland from the Sustainable Green Committee, and I know the town does not yet have a clear, as far as I know, a directive on going to net zero or, you know, climate directive. But he was saying that the, the federal, um, goal is by 2050 to be net zero. The state goal is by 2050 to be net zero. It is their, um, goal that they're putting together a climate action plan, and it's their stated recommendation that we follow suit and make it net zero by 2050. But again, that has not been adopted by the town. But again, that has not been adopted by the town yet. I think the committee is currently doing a bit of a roadshow to boards and commissions, and has asked to come to us, to you later. But they are socializing the need and getting feedback and so forth. So, all that said, if we, if we are asked, say, next year, we're actually given a directive, is there anything in our HVAC replacement here, the sort of the scheduled end-of-life, like the 1.25 million, is there anything in there that we could wait a year while we sort of coalesce around a community goal? So that, you know, if we were to go to geothermal or some other source, it's expensive. So, it's going to, we have, you know, you have done a beautiful job of projecting our replacements over the next five, five or six years or whatever, and that's, you know, a pretty good price tag on those as well. So, I guess I'm wondering, I'm feeling like if there's sort of discretionary replacements that are absolutely the right thing to do, but we could probably get by another year while we figure out our direction. I would like to know what those are, just to see if we can reduce that number a little bit while we wait and develop a plan. Because I know you were not given a plan or a directive, and our budget message didn't have anything in it. So, it's sort of new, it's newly becoming a center of discussion, I think.
So, we've, we've had some conversations with several engineers, including the engineer who attended the Green Committee. We've had conversations with Eversource and, most recently, with the town manager today as well.
Oh, thank you, great.
So, the timeline, if I understand it from everyone, is a climate action plan will be developed by the Sustainable Committee, and that takes time.
Yes.
And the town is bringing in a consultant to help the committee gather data and do their due diligence and formulate this plan. Then that plan would be presented to town meeting. So, even in a very fast-paced timeline, this could be presented at the May town meeting, although I don't think that's a realistic timeline. So, but if it was presented at the May of '23 town meeting, then the May of '24 town meeting, we would have to ask for feasibility money to answer to the climate action plan, which would then put any request for anything at May of '25. So, again, these that we're looking at are at end-of-life now. We have some units at the Hopkins School where Tim did emergency compressor replacement of a used compressor, because we didn't want to spend a lot of money, and that was for cool air that got us through the spring and, of course, summer school and the fall. So, there is a risk of waiting to even go to town meeting of '25. So, that's the risk.
Very, very grateful for the, I know that this was not like center of mind with everything else going on, so I really appreciate that quick investigation of the information. I'm wondering, is there any feasibility, we're going to be heading in this direction. We just, it might not be this year, it might be next year, but we know where we're going. Is there anything, like, would we consider, like, swapping out the 100,000 for the point-to-point testing for feasibility? Like, to sort of get a jump on where we need to go? Is there anything that we might consider? Just, just eager to, to not be caught with, you know, all these schools to look at, all at once. It's going to be a big ask, and any planning we can do early would be great.
So, the point-to-point testing is a green energy strategy, because you're looking for your building efficiencies. So, I'm not sure that would be something you would want to sacrifice, because that does fall into what the Sustainable Green Group should want to look at, you know, as they're developing their baseline, you know, what, what is the baseline of these buildings? And this would be a piece where we're really looking at the efficiency of the building.
Yeah, I would probably even add, I think in one of our conversations with one of the groups of engineers that we met with, had, almost treated it as two separate things. I think he, he recommended that we move forward with the point-to-point testing, because it would be separate from anything else we did anyway.
So, no changes? No, no opportunities, I should say?
I don't think, I mean, I don't think there is a good opportunity. I think, I think it's, I think the efficiencies that we could pick up through this testing and understanding where our deficiencies are are probably the greater good at this point.
And so, in the district-wide replacements, I know Hopkins has had issues. Are all of those, like, urgent-ish?
So, yeah, I think it's, you know, I can tell you today that, is it urgent? Maybe not. It could die tomorrow. You know, I think that's kind of where we are with the replacement of a lot of these things. And some of these things we probably should have been looking at, or the district should have been looking at even before Susan and I started here. And I think what continues to happen is the compounding of it, right? So, we keep pushing, we push because of budget restrictions, we push because of, you know, different things, and then at some point, it just gives way, you know? It's, you know, I think we try to reference when we're talking about buildings a lot to our homes, right? So, it's much different use, you know? There's a lot more use of this equipment than there is of your home, home equipment. There's a lot more mechanical things that can happen to these things, or that do happen to these things through regular maintenance that don't happen at home. So, as much as we try to assimilate it, so maybe people who don't work in this every day can kind of get a better grasp on it, it's very different in application.
Okay, so, one last question. I won't ask any more questions. So, again, sort of thinking about the future, because I think we do all know, maybe not this year, maybe the year after, like, would it change, if we thought there would be a point where we were going to start to retrofit school by school, would it change which units you put in the 1.25? Like, I think we have got three Hopkins, you know, we've got a couple different schools, and then we have, we'll do two more here and three more here. Would we potentially look to keep, you know, sort of put one school more at risk, I guess, while we think that would be the first one for retrofit? Would it change anything there?
So, some of, some of the conversations that we've had with the engineers in terms of full electrification, if that's, you know, the, the direction that is decided upon, there's a lot more to that than just unit replacement, because you need to look at your building envelope. How do you increase your insulation on a brick wall? So, there, there's a lot of steps. So, taking these steps alone does not put us further back. And the other piece to keep in mind is the boilers at the Hopkins School are only about six years old. So, you, you wouldn't pull those to put in a geothermal well. You know, so there are approaches, and this does not put us further behind. It keeps the students that are in those buildings in a comfortable learning environment for a few years while we figure out the direction we're going. One of the buildings that may be your opportunity, because if you look out in that long-term plan, we will be looking at the boilers at the High School. So, that may be your first opportunity to really focus on a building. Not really Hopkins yet, because some of that interior, you know, mechanics are newer, meaning your boilers. We just did the boilers, obviously, at the middle school, but the middle school is messy. So, there's all kinds of issues with that. So, your, your opportunity you may begin with would be a high school.
Thank you very much.
Excellent questions. Anybody else with questions?
I totally question, and maybe there can be other, we had talked about for the field, so that we can replace it in time for athletes. There was a bunch of steps afterwards, and I don't know if that's something that we need to do as a committee, or is it something that you and Tim have to do separately? But I just wanted to make sure that if, when we approve this tonight, that we are all, like, the committee and everyone else is aware of what needs to happen next, to ensure that these things move quickly. And maybe that was, maybe this is not the appropriate forum, but I thought I would ask.
So, the, this is where the, the timing of a spring town meeting for a summer slammer job does not do you any favors.
Right.
So, we do not have money for design, not sufficient. We had talked a little bit about whether there was some money, but not sufficient funding is available for us to do full design and take it to bid prior to the May town meeting for a summer of '23 build.
Yeah, what a bummer.
So, it, it most likely would be a summer of '24 project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, do it. I'll move to approve the, there's nothing we're pulling out, correct?
Did not hear anybody.
All right. Move to approve the FY24 capital plan in the amount of 30 million, 952,389 dollars.
Okay, motion by Holly, is there a second?
A second is.
Second by Jen, we'll do a roll call, starting with Holly.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I am also an aye, and that passes, and now moves on to the town. And we'll, we'll come back to discussion with the town probably in a couple months.
Oh, no, soon.
Soon.
We'll do this again in a couple weeks.
That's right. I'm looking for opportunities.
Every two weeks I present this.
All right, thank you so much, Tim. I know that you're probably going to tune in on your way home.
I will, I will.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
Oh, please.
Thank you.
Thanks for tuning in.
So, do we want to go back? I feel like we're in jeopardy, do we? I'm going to take a report, see for the end of your report there for, oh, sure. Goals? Goals, yes.
And I did plan for this to be very quick tonight, because I knew that we had a very packed agenda, so.
Well, and that, that's the other thing, is oftentimes when it gets to be this late, we push things off. I'm nervous pushing anything off, because our next few meetings will probably be very busy with budget, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, so, here we go. I do promise this will be very quick. So, superintendent goals update. I put the five goals out there, I think, sort of nice and crisp. The first one is the math curriculum and instruction, instruction and assessment goal. Just very quickly, we have done all of our STAR testing, that we promised we would do. We had grade schools come in Tuesday during the PD day and do some training in using data in their PLCs. So, that was at the middle school level, and they were, the entire middle school was there. So, whether you're a social studies teacher, English teacher, but this obviously pertains to math, so it's really a nice way to get them to look more closely at some of that data. Shelley Moran, our math director, simultaneous, was delivering math to all the K-5 teachers, and they did a nice thing. She and Deb Moriarty did a flip-flop. So, they took half the ELAs and half the maths, and then at lunchtime, the providers switched to the teachers' state book. The grade six math, the function has changed this year. There's increased differentiation going on there, and I've been meeting with Matt LaFave, our new principal, to talk about that a little bit as we've been going. And at some point soon, I think probably Jeff and Shelley and Kathy Anasoskis, who's the CTL at the middle school, and Carly Christopher Lee at the high school, should really meet to think about that whole trajectory in math. What does it look like? Shelley, Jeff and I sit and review sort of math trends and math data once every month, and we have now implemented a fact fluency screener for goal number one. So, those are all the things we've been doing there. Goal number two was the writing K-12, and Deb Moriarty, as you know, is working on increased writing K-5. We did a whole lot with, you know, reading and literacy and word attack and all that. Now, we're working on the writing end of things, and the middle school and high school are both doing the disciplinary literacy. So, every Monday morning, we do have a very structured central office meeting where we just invite the curricular staff. You know, it used to be that we had all of the directors, but now we do them in two separate pieces, and I think that's working out really well. The middle school ELA director has regular communication with me. She's got plenty of spreadsheets on how the STAR data, the MCES data, all of that is looking. She's in classrooms all of the time, I know, and going to PLCs regularly and talking about writing. And one of the things that we've been thinking about is, at least in grade six, where they have the double block, kind of isolating that for next year, so that they have a block of ELA and then a block of composition specifically, which we both really like, and they don't have to be back-to-back, so kids aren't in ELA for 90 minutes. They can, they can do those two things untied. At the K-5 level, they've really been working on common assessments, lots of curriculum instruction work on SRSD and even taking SRSD and applying some more of those sort of discrete skills. I have met once, well, Mr. Bishop and Sarah Ellen, who's the SML at the High School for English, and Mike Donahue, who was the special education team chair there. We got together and talked about what would it look like if we brought the English teachers and the special educators together to talk about disciplinary literacy, because we've done a lot of that work in the content areas, and now we're, as we're looking at academic support, the question is, how do we support our, our most struggling readers and writers as they look at disciplinary literacy? So, we did have an afternoon where we did some PD with the English department, and then today I met with Colin Cormier, the SML for Social Studies. And next week, we'll do the same exact thing with Social Studies. So, we're hitting departments with special education sort of one by one. Okay, so, DEI, social justice, culturally responsive teaching, and anti-bias, anti-racist teaching. One of my goals at the beginning of this was to get Carla Burley and Jen Suker kind of married, because it felt like their work, they were dancing on each other's toes all of the time. And, you know, recently, I think that there's far more definition into what's Dr. Zaleski's role, what's Mrs. Burley's role, what's Mrs. Suker's role? And just the other day, when we had our PD day, they were presenting, Carla was coming in to present the holistic survey, student assessment survey data, and, you know, Jen was there, because one of the things we keep saying is, you can't just look at that data in isolation, we have to look at it through an equity lens as well. So, that joint presentation, I thought, was, was really nice, and it got to where we were going. Jeff and Carla and I attended a DESI training on vocal data. So, that was also pretty helpful, because you can go in and take a look at who are your riskiest kids. And when you start to look at them, you can break that down by subgroup, so you can say, are these kids who belong to some kind of an ethnic minority, or are these kids who are socio-economically disadvantaged? And that gives you really good information that combined sort of sell, again, and, and equity information. The restorative circles that we, we did over the summer, that was, has been pretty amazing. I think the high school and middle school are using them all of the time, and I think Carla and Jen are kind of coming to terms, what, what does that look like? I think philosophically, they were, they were a part at the beginning of the year, and now they've kind of come better together with that. Stephanie Harvey, who is the consultant that Carla introduced us to last year, has sort of now latched on to our middle school, and she's making multiple presentations there this year. I am very proud to say that the burf is everywhere, and I'm even prouder to say that Holliston called and said, can we have your burf? And I said, yes, you can. So, that was really nice, I thought. It was a nice compliment. On Tuesday, we also had from Black Print Consulting, Lisette Castillo. She worked with the admin team over the summer, and she does an awful lot of work in culturally responsive practice and culturally responsive teaching. She's dynamic, and she's, she's pretty wonderful. So, we've had her, and some of the teachers have even asked me, you know, is there ways that we can bring her back and just bring her, like, on a more sort of personal, smaller level, because she was with everybody in the entire district? The Yale University work at Elmwood is ongoing, so that's kind of exciting. And as you know, the teachers are kind of wearing cameras and microphones and recording themselves as they teach, and then getting feedback on their cultural responsiveness. And because of the work we did on Tuesday, I had said to the entire district, you know, we promised you more culturally responsive stuff on opening day, and today we're kind of paying on a debt. So, that's where that one is. Enrollment, and my enrollment goal was really about the whole Elmwood project, and I don't know that I have to tell you much about that, because I think you, you see me in that venue all of the time. We met with our Perkins Eastman and Compass folks this morning, and really, the educational plan is in much better shape than it has been. And I think tonight, we've presented for the first time a little bit of grade confi- And I think tonight, we've presented for the first time a little bit of grade configuration information, and that's where we're heading with that right now. And I'm very excited about that. Like, I think that that's information our community needs. And finally, goal five is, again, bringing the admin team together. And I really do have to thank Jeff for this, because one of the things that we've been doing is, we sort of have a business meeting, and then we have a culture meeting, and then we have a business meeting, and then we have a culture. And he is bringing incredible sort of culture in, into that setting, planning some exceptional PD around it, so, nice work.
Thank you.
Thanks for making me look good. I appreciate it. Yeah, and I still meet with the individual, each individual building principal once each week, and once a month, I meet with the five of them collectively. So it's been nice for team building. And that's it.
Thank you.
That was the super fabulous goals update ever.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No, you say that, and like...
You're right.
Yeah.
It's fantastic.
That's a great, great update.
I love that, the way that you've presented that there, all-on-one.
Well, you remember when we used to have all of that language out there? You couldn't see it.
Yeah.
Right? You'd all be like, this is a huge approval, it's great. Thank you.
All right, so that brings us then into the Hopkinton High School stipends.
Okay, so this request comes from Laura Tice, the assistant principal at Hopkinton High School. It's very simple. There are 11, I think, clubs that are no longer running, and they simply want to take that money and move it over to clubs that are running. So it was a $6,500 move from one column to another. So costs us nothing, just gets the right people paid.
And this is a common practice. I know we've done this other years to keep up with student demand.
Yes.
Any questions?
My only, only question will go. So I sit, wouldn't have any more. Do we have to post these positions now? And they'll run?
Well, they live in that list of stipends that Kim has. And so at the start of this, and typically, we don't pay for them for the first year, so somebody runs kind of his little pilot to see if they can generate interest. And as Nancy said, all of these are derived from student, so no one's interested in knitting, but people are interested in fishing. So what will happen is, Kim publishes that, that list, or Mr. Bishop will say, this ran as a trial last year, but we want to run it this year. So that gives people the opportunity to apply for them.
Great.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion on the Hopkinton High School stipends?
I'll do it. I will request approval to reallocate stipends for non-existing clubs to new clubs listed in the memo.
Okay. Motion by Holly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. We'll do a roll call, starting with you, Holly.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so thank you for that. And that brings us then into the Hopkinton Middle School Club Advisor Stipend changes.
Sure, and this one comes from Matt LaFave, the principal, our new principal at the middle school. He would simply like to have a geography club, which will replace a writing club this year.
Okay. Any questions on that?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the writing club stipend?
I will move to approve the writing club stipend for 2022, 2023 for $550.
Excellent. Motion by Holly. Is there a second? Second by Jen. We'll start with you, Holly.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Aye.
I am also an aye, and that also passes. Please pass along our thank you to both high school and the middle school for bringing those forward. And then if there are future agenda items that people want to bring out here, or you can email them if you, they come up in the meantime.
I wanted to say, I've received many, many accolades about Mr. LaFave, and I know he is new to the district, so I've heard from many middle school. I know this is not a future agenda item, but I didn't know what else to say it. Yeah, so I wanted to put that into the universe.
Okay, thank you. I've also heard excellent things.
Yeah.
The Sustainable Green, climate, this is not gonna surprise you, Climate Action Plan Committee would like to make their rounds to us, so we can work on that. They need about 20 minutes or so for give and take, so we can put that in. I told Warren budget earlier, so it may have to wait, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, or you can find some dates that are good for them, and we can figure out how to do that.
Okay. That brings us then into items by consensus.
Okay, as superintendent, I recommend the school committee approve the items by consensus as outlined for agenda. Okay?
I can, I'll move to approve all the items by consensus that's outlined by the superintendent.
Excellent. So a motion by Holly.
Second by Jen.
Second by Jen. We'll do a roll call, starting with you, Holly.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I am also an aye, and that passes. And that would bring us into if there is a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.
So a motion by Holly, is there a?
There's a second.
Second by Jen. We'll start with you, Holly.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I am also an aye. We are adjourned at 9:54. Our next meeting is on next week, November 17th. It's a regular meeting here with budget and presentations on athletics, the high school, the middle school, and curriculum. And then we have also the November 30th forum with ESBC. Thank you all, and thank you everybody for hanging in for a late one tonight. Thanks.
All right.